Folks, if everybody could take a seat as soon as possible, we're gonna get the meeting started. Okay, welcome, everybody. Tonight is February 22nd, 2010. This is a public hearing for the City of Lowell zoning Board of Appeals. We have three matters on for continuance tonight. They are 403 Andover Street, 1519 to 1527 Middlesex Street, and 62 Highland Street, and one order of new business, which is 63 Smith Street. We're gonna take the petitions somewhat out of order. The first one I'm gonna take is a 62 Highland Street. That's ZB 2009 000061. That's a request for a variance. And the board had received a letter requesting a withdrawal from the application. I'll read that into the record. This is a letter addressed to the City Lowell Board of Appeals, care of Kimberly Hayes Hackett, dated February 22nd regarding the Highland Place Condominium Association. Dear Ms. Hayes Hackett, I represent the Highland Place Condominium Association. On January 25th, we sought variances for both parking and lot line adjustment. We hereby request that our petition be withdrawn without prejudice. Our petition was submitted for variances which no longer are necessary because we have made changes in the plan which will now conform to the zoning code and zoning regulations. We have a buyer for the property at 62 Highland Street, and this buyer will file a new application for a special permit to extend the date for issuance of a building permit. The zoning officer Kathy Murphy has said that anyone with an interest in the property can apply for this application. Please call me if you have any questions. Thank you for your cooperation. So without requiring anybody to appear for the petition, we're gonna allow a withdrawal with a vote. So, um...
I make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Well, Mr. Chairman, one question first. Now, this will come back to the board as a new petition, correct? And the public will be notified.
Yes.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Roll call. Kim, please. Your motion to withdraw without prejudice, yes. Withdraw without prejudice.
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 Okay, the ZB 2009 00061 has been withdrawn without prejudice. The next matter is ZB 2009 000045, special permit telecommunications. The applicant is Clear Wireless LLC. The address is 403 Andover Street for the installation of telecommunications panels, dish antennas, and related equipment inside a stealth steeple, housing, and related equipment on the side of a church for Clear Wireless according to Section 7.6 of the zoning ordinance. Would a representative of Clear Wireless please address the board? And just for anybody watching or here tonight, this matter has been continued, I believe, at least twice. We had requested, because of the technical nature of the application, we'd requested a peer review, and we have received that. We also got input from the Lowell Historic Board about the historic nature, which was another concern the board had. And the other issue we asked the applicant to look into is the issue of maybe some alternative to this location. So, sir, if you want to address the board?
With the law firm of Prince, Lobel, Golovski, and Thai, representing the applicant, Clear Wire. As indicated by the chairman, there were a number of follow-up action items that we were asked to look at. One of those was alternative sites. What I'd like to do is introduce the site acquisition consultant, Andrew Thompson, as well as our radio frequency consultant, to go through all of the alternative sites that were investigated for this particular location.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Andrew Thompson, site acquisition consultant for Clear Wireless LLC. If I may, I'd like to approach just to distribute some documents that we'll be referencing.
While we're waiting, is the peer review expert, Mr. Maxson, here tonight?
Yes, sir. My name is David Maxson.
Okay, just wanted to check to see if you were here.
Thanks.
Okay. So, just for the folks listening and watching, we've been handed an affidavit of site acquisition specialist that's gonna be explained, as well as a existing site inventory within a one-mile radius of 403 Andover Street.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To begin with, I'd like to touch base on, as I said, the thicker packet that was distributed to the members of the board. If you would turn to tab one, alternate site analysis. In several previous meetings, there were some questions as to the alternate candidates that we explored. I do believe that this list represents much more of an exhaustive list of what we looked at in terms of trying to satisfy the board's concerns about actually looking into alternative candidates. I'll try to move somewhat quickly through the first few because I believe they've already been addressed at previous meetings. For example, Saints Medical Center, Example A, was addressed at a previous meeting. This site is too far west to actually provide the coverage objective and provides duplicative coverage with a site that Clear Wire already has received permits for at 117 High Street. And again, so that particular location would not fill the significant gap in coverage that exists in the area around 403 Andover Street. Options B and C, I'll take together. The Peter W. Riley Elementary School and the James Sullivan Middle School. We were told by the superintendent of schools that the school would not be interested in hosting a cell site on their school grounds. So those candidates were immediately eliminated from contention. The next few candidates were new candidates that have been brought in since the last time we were here. First, the Nessmith House, 229 Andover Street. Again, this site was rejected by Clear Wire radio frequency engineers because it is too close to an existing Clear Wire site at 117 High Street. Again, this site is too far west from the actual coverage objective of where we're looking to provide our coverage. The next candidate, Princeton Belvedere Apartments, located at 46 Park Street. Again, I do believe this was a candidate that we were asked to take a look at. And this site also is too far west and too close to 117 High Street in order to meet our coverage needs, and also provides, again, duplicative coverage with 117 High Street. The next site, Saint Eugene House, missionary oblate of Mary Immaculate, located at 60 Wyman Street. This site was rejected for two reasons. First, the existing rooftop is wooden and pitched, and we did not believe would provide the proper structural supports without needing extensions, especially also to get above the tree line. This particular site, again, is below the tree line and would require some form of an extension to actually meet our coverage needs. This site is also somewhat far west along 403 Andover Street in order to meet our coverage objectives. The next two candidates were actually candidates, I started to look further east along Andover Street, actually pushing into Tewksbury. The Long Meadow Golf Club, which is actually located on 165 Havila Street. This site was rejected because, again, it would require raw land to be built. We didn't view this as a feasible alternative to a steeple. Further, this site is too far east to fill the significant coverage gap that exists in the area of 403 Andover Street. Lowell Assembly of God, candidate H, 995 Andover Street. This site is actually located in Tewksbury, Massachusetts. T-Mobile is actually installed inside of this steeple at the church. And again, this site is too far to the east to provide coverage into the area where we're looking to provide coverage. I believe, there are two left, Troll Brook Golf and Tennis Club. This is 170 River Road, located in Tewksbury, Mass. There's a 100-foot T-Mobile concealed monopole where Metro PCS is also installed. Based on the available height, the height that would be available in that pole, based on each carrier taking approximately 10 feet, is between 75 and 80 feet. Based on that height, as well as running the coverage maps at an extension of 110 feet, we could not achieve the coverage that we were looking for in the area of 403 Andover Street.
Ask you about the Lowell Assembly of God only because if it already has an existing, you could co-locate there, right? If you, if it...
Potentially, if there were space inside the steeple, I believe that steeple would present some design challenges because it's, there's, T-Mobile is actually installed in the cupola, and then it's so narrow, it would require some form of a steeple replacement. But again, we can show the coverage maps once I run through these, and we'll show that at a height of what we thought to be an extension of approximately 10 feet, still would not provide the coverage into the area of where we were looking to go.
Well, it might not provide at all, but wouldn't it provide a significant part of it? I mean, it's less than a mile.
I think what we'll show is that that would actually be complementary coverage that would actually be a candidate for coverage to the east that would actually overlap with 403 Andover Street. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, we can show the maps again, but it wouldn't provide coverage.
If there were an alternative site that, you know, we agreed that you might be able to utilize, then you're saying that this would be overage? This would just be kind of padded coverage to that and help assist that?
The exact opposite. This would be, I guess complementary might not be the word I'm looking for, but it would actually be... So you can see right here, this white area where 7190 is the dot in the middle, this is the location of the Lowell Mission Church. And if you were moving directly east along Andover Street, if we were to install inside the Lowell Assembly of God, and this was run at a height of 60 feet, which we believe is a fair approximation of potentially an extension at that site, this is the coverage area that we would actually get. So you can see that it actually provides really no relief into this coverage gap that we're looking to fill.
So the coverage goes east but doesn't go west?
This is the propagated coverage map, and again, RF engineer AJ can speak to that a little more, I guess, technically, if you'd like, but again, this is how we project our coverage to be coming from that site.
The center of the map, where there's a red dot, that's the location of our proposed site, the Lowell Mission Church, and this is what you're trying to cover. And the Assembly of God Church is right here on the east side with the red square here, and this is the coverage you get. As you can see, we're trying to fill this gap here, and it won't reach that far. I mean, this could be potentially our next ring, but we can use that location for our other rings.
Okay, how many feet does your equipment cover?
It depends on the height and the terrain in the area.
Say 55 feet. How far of a diameter does that cover?
If the trees are below 55, like around 50 feet and all, and we are above the tree height, at least by 10 feet, it should cover an area of like a quarter-mile radius to one-mile radius. And assuming there are no obstacles, like clutter obstacles, obstructions, and the terrain... As you can know, this part of Lowell has really high and low terrain, like small hills around. That limits the coverage from all the sites on the west. You can see, they don't kind of penetrate here on the east. I have an elevation view that would make it easier. I don't know whether it's clear. This is where the, our proposed location is. As you can see, this is the river around going east-west, and there's a big hill around the west. This is what is preventing other sites from getting into this area. That's why we need something in this area. And you can see, this is, this area lies in a valley kind of area. There's another big hill here, and there's a big hill here across the, on the north of the river, preventing other sites to get into that area.
All right, that was one concern I had, so...
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Point of clarification, 117 High Street. Did this board vote on that?
No, sir. That was actually a previous decision from a few years ago, and it was, Clear Wire is actually owned by Sprint Spectrum, Sprint Nextel. And so it was just basically a like-for-like swap of antennas, as far as I know. So it wasn't required to come back to the zoning Board of Appeals. They actually received the building permit for that site. The previous zoning decision did not require them to come back.
But are you saying you're gonna utilize that particular spot?
It is, it's a current installation. They're swapping out antennas.
So Sprint owns it?
What's that?
Sprint owns the location?
No, Sprint doesn't actually own the, Sprint's on the rooftop, and Sprint actually owns Clear Wire. And so what Clear Wire is able to do in some instances is actually utilize Sprint's existing lease entitlements and existing permit entitlements and just swap out like-for-like antennas. And so, to my knowledge, that's what they're doing at that site, and that's why they didn't come before the board.
Is that?
Okay.
Steve?
What?
That, we can do that? They can utilize that site? That's why I'm not clear on this.
Are you talking about 117 High Street?
Yeah.
I'm not aware. I'm just going by what he said. You said you are utilizing that site, right?
Yes, it went to code enforcement, and they determined that the actual installation was covered by the previous zoning decision.
So you got a building permit?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the final site, which we just brought in because it is an existing tower to the south, is located on 137 Phoenix Ave. It's an existing AT&amp;T monopole, and this site actually corresponds with another Clear Wire ring where Clear Wire is currently seeking lease entitlements to that site. And again, that site is far too, far too far to the south to actually provide coverage into the target area around 403 Andover Street. And I think, it might make sense at this point, obviously, I think, as we did, as we did with with the Lowell Assembly of God Church, to actually walk through the coverage maps, if the board would like to see those, so they can see the actual propagated coverage from these particular sites. They are a part of the submission that was given to the board this evening.
Okay.
So if you flip to tab three of the submission, it will show the proposed coverage area. So this will show the actual footprint, the green coverage, is the coverage that we're seeking with Lowell Mission Church coming from the steeple installation. And if you flip to the next tab, using that as a reference, we can walk through the sites that actually merited creating these coverage maps based on their previous existence. Again, for reference, we can show the green coverage area coming from 7190C Lowell Mission Church. Flipping to the next page, this page actually shows all the existing coverage to the west and the south coming from proposed, coming from proposed Clear Wire sites, as well as leaving Lowell Mission Church, showing no coverage coming from the church, and then showing the coverage coming from the Long Meadow Golf Club. We ran this site. Again, there is no tower at this location, but we did run it at 100 feet, assuming that there may be potential for a tower there. And again, it is clear that this site is too far to the east at 100 feet to provide any kind of reliable coverage into the coverage gap that we're actually proposing to fill with the steeple at 403 Andover Street. Again, the next page, which we went through with Mr. Chairman, showing Assembly of God. Again, showing the Assembly of God Church too far to the east to actually provide reliable coverage into the gap that we are trying to fill. And then lastly, the Troll Brook Golf Club, which again is located to the northeast of our proposed site at 403 Andover Street, running this site with a 10-foot extension at 110 feet. Again, it is evident that we do not provide coverage into the area around 403 Andover Street, where we're proposing to fill this coverage gap. Now, the next thing that I was hoping to walk the board through are some revised photo simulations that we've created working with a stealth steeple manufacturer. These photo simulations are a little bit different than what were being shown to the board before. The original submission of photo simulations showed essentially a black steeple, the steeple being designed to match the rooftop of the church. However, in consulting with a stealth design company, we determined that we felt that this was a much better representation and fit into the neighborhood much more, much more with the fabric of the neighborhood and I guess the design in the neighborhood. We feel that this particular steeple design blends much better with the existing architecture along Andover Street.
Do you have any, I mean, I recognize a lot of the people in that neighborhood here. Do you have any of the photos that they can see?
Absolutely.
They're just listening along, but they don't know what we're looking at.
Absolutely, yeah. Again, so we show the church with photo simulations of what the proposed steeple would look like from three angles, from the north, from the east, actually, that's actually from the west, and then also from the south, from behind the steeple. And again, we feel that this is a very, a very like-for-like representation of what the actual final steeple, the proposed build, would look like. And then lastly, the steeple company that we have been working with in obtaining the final design for the church steeple actually provided us with a number of examples of steeples that they've done in the past, from complete steeple, from complete steeple rebuilds, brand-new construction, to simple replacements of panels on the church. These were submitted for the board's review with this package. And I'd like to just walk through each one of these samples really quickly for the board's review. The first steeple in this package is actually located in Milburn, New Jersey. And this steeple, from the bottom of the white base all the way to the top, was an approximately 90-foot steeple, complete reconstruction and rebuild to house multiple carriers inside this steeple. So from the very base of that, the white steeple, to the very top of the steeple was completely rebuilt with that in mind by the stealth company. So this is an approximate 90-foot rebuild, which obviously is a project of massive scale that, you know, we're not even comparing to in this location. The second steeple is actually located in Alabama, and this is just an example, again, of a structure that was built and designed entirely in mind to house wireless communications equipment. And I just think that, again, this is an example of a steeple and construction that was built and designed to blend with the existing architecture at the site. The third steeple is actually a steeple located in Wellesley, Massachusetts. And this is actually a pretty popular steeple and church in terms of it's right along the Boston Marathon route. So a lot of people are seen taking their photographs in front of this church, and the top half of this steeple, this steeple, excuse me, was replaced. So the actual top half of that steeple is the only part that is built with RF-friendly material. The following steeple located in Wakefield, Massachusetts. And again, this site has been built with multiple carriers inside the actual black portion, the upper portion of the steeple. And again, the following steeple is located in Southington, Connecticut. And here, there are actually two carriers installed inside the steeple, in the upper cone and then in the louvers. And then lastly, there are two churches that are shown, one that's located in Lowell and one that's located in Tewksbury. The first church, T-Mobile, is installed. It's at 60 Hastings Street. It's Calvary Baptist Church, and T-Mobile is actually installed inside the louvers of that particular steeple. And then lastly, the picture of Lowell Assembly of God, where T-Mobile is installed inside the louvers of this particular church. And in terms of the stealth company that is working with us to finalize the design, I would like to submit to the board, and for any abutters or anybody that's here concerning this site, we do have sample material from the stealth company for you to take a look at just to kind of see the look and the feel of what the material that would actually make up this steeple would be. And so if I could approach to show the board that...
Yeah, one clarification that I think we could all benefit from is if you tell us, is it 55 feet from the base, or is it 50, where's your starting point?
From the ground to the very top of the steeple is 55 feet. So it's not a 50, it's not a 55-foot increase. The very, very top of the building is...
28, 29 feet?
Exactly, exactly. And just, in terms of the historic meeting that I attended,
Yes.
in general, the steeple-to-building height ratio is approximately 1:1. And so this is an approximate 24 to 25-foot building with an approximate 28 to 30-foot steeple. So again, that falls pretty much within the architectural guidelines that they were basing their decision on for the height of the steeple, of an approximately 1:1 ratio, again, in terms of building height and steeple height. Lastly, the last thing that I would like to address, again, are just some of the questions that came up in Mr. Maxson's report that we received this past Friday afternoon. Mr. Maxson had requested that we provide a site inventory of a radius of one mile surrounding our location to show that we had essentially exhausted alternative candidates. Again, it's a little, as it's stated in the letter that I submitted to the board, in some cases, going out to a mile wasn't required because we had, again, sites where Clear Wire is proposed to install within that one mile.
Right.
So we were bound with moving out to that, moving out that far before we would start providing duplicative coverage with other sites that will be coming on air. And so essentially, as you move in the one-mile radius, starting to the west, Sprint has proposed sites to the west, approximately a half-mile away, at 117 High Street, which we have, again, repeatedly, I guess, referred to in this particular presentation. And if you do want to, if you would refer to the coverage maps that were submitted, again, these will kind of provide a frame of reference for where these sites are located. Again, so directly to the west, we have 5501 on the coverage maps. This is 117 High Street. A little bit further south from there, 50 Summer Street, this is another Lowell Housing Authority building. It's about, it's a little over one mile to the southwest from our site. Moving further south, corresponding with 5502 on our coverage map, we have 649 Lawrence Street. It's an existing smokestack where Clear Wire is proposing to install. This is approximately .88 miles to the southwest from our site. And then moving further to the south, corresponding with 7189A on our coverage map, we have 92 Bolt Street. This is an existing Verizon monopole. It is approximately 1.25 miles to the southwest. Clear Wire is currently seeking leasing entitlements at this site to provide coverage in that area. Moving directly from the east from that site to 5938, this is 173 Phoenix Street. Again, this is an existing AT&amp;T monopole. It's approximately 1.22 miles south to our site, where we're also seeking entitlements at that site to provide coverage in that area. As you move further to the east, again, we start running into the sites that we discussed as being too far to the east, 995 Andover Street, which is the Lowell Assembly of God Church in Tewksbury. And then even a little bit further to the northeast, 170 River Road, which is Troll Brook Country Club, where there is, where there is an existing 100-foot concealed monopole. Lastly, to the north, again, we've run into some issues with finding sites in the north. It is a very dense residential area where there aren't towers currently existing. We do know that T-Mobile is installed at 543 Bridge Street. And again, this is a site that's a little bit too far to the north, to the northwest to be able to provide effective coverage into the area where we're looking. Two other sites that Mr. Maxson had addressed that are not addressed in this particular report are Duck Island, the wastewater treatment facility, as well as the reservoir. And we have some serious concerns about looking at those as alternative sites. First, they're...
When you say the reservoir, which reservoir?
I believe, do you know the name of it that was in the, there's a reservoir to the northwest, essentially.
Up in Centerville?
Just north of Wentworth Street, or Avenue. Wentworth Avenue? Yeah.
I think that's been developed.
Yes, that's housing now.
Yes, that's housing now, sir.
Looking at topographic maps.
Right, that was, that was always...
On high ground and saw some kind of...
That was always a reservoir.
Yeah.
For years, and it was filled in, and there are now six homes there.
It's just homes, there's no...
Just, just homes, it was all filled in, and it's a high point, but it's, it's all homes now.
My apologies, it's an old map.
No, that's...
So again, the, the final candidate that Mr. Maxson really brought up as a potential alternative, being Duck Island, we had some significant concerns about looking at it as a viable alternative. It would require a minimum of probably 110 foot, 110-foot Monopole to provide coverage into the area where we're looking to build. Not only that, it's city-owned property, where there currently is not an RFP released. There's no timeline for an RFP to be released. And if that RFP was released, there's no guarantee that Clearwire would A, win the RFP, or B, be guaranteed to be installed on that particular site within a reasonable timeframe, where we can provide coverage into our potential customers in the timeframe that we're looking to provide that coverage. And again, essentially, what we have the biggest concerns about are that we're seeing, obviously, a lot of concern from abutters and from neighbors of this site, concerned about a 55-foot steeple, and looking out of their house and seeing this 55-foot steeple. I think that the concern that would come from any abutters along, along Duck Island, as well as any abutters that live in Belvidere, along the northern side of Andover Street that look down into the river, they would be looking down at 125-foot Monopole rather than a steeple on Andover Street. So to us, in terms of trying to operate in the, trying to operate in the spirit of the bylaw and finding the best possible place to provide coverage in this area while being as visually unobtrusive as possible, 100-foot-plus Monopole to us doesn't necessarily seem like the best solution when we can install a steeple that has received support from the Lowell Historic Board. We've been to neighborhood meetings, and, you know, there have not been a lot of concerns expressed outside of these ZBA meetings. And we sincerely feel that, again, it is a much, much less obtrusive installation to install a steeple where we're proposing versus 100, versus 100-plus-foot Monopole.
Right, but the Monopole would be at Duck Island, so that's already an industrial site there, sort of, sort of industrial.
Absolutely, and I think we understand that. But again, there's, you know, there, there's a list of concerns that make that not a viable candidate, primarily the fact that it's not available for an RFP at this time.
But it's possible, right? I mean, it's...
I mean, I suppose anything is possible, yes. But again, our concern being that we also feel that if we're seeing this much opposition, again, anybody that lives on the northern side of Belvidere, and then anybody that lives down on the other side of the river, is going to be looking at this 100, 110, 120-foot Monopole versus a 55-foot steeple, which we feel is just much less obtrusive in terms of design, in terms of impact on the neighborhood. And I think it's clear that the Historic Board supports that, supports that specific proposal. And again, we did attend the Belvidere Neighborhood Meeting, and we received nothing but positive feedback in terms of how creative the proposal actually was.
All right.
I think I'll turn it back over to Attorney Lacy for some final comments.
Okay.
Couple of the other issues that Mr. Maxson had raised were with respect to the zoning ordinance and how to interpret the zoning ordinance. In particular, one of the issues that he raised is whether or not the proposal is a tower. He refers to basically the definition of a telecommunications tower. And the issue is, how do you interpret it? In the past, the zoning enforcement officer, as well as this board, has not interpreted as broadly as Mr. Maxson suggests. That basically, any structure, and I understand why, I mean, the language is "any structure that's designed and constructed primarily for the purpose of supporting one or more antennas," period. The next sentence gives examples of what that actually means, which are the traditional towers, the lattice-style towers, the monopoles, the guide towers. Those are what has historically been interpreted as towers by the zoning enforcement officer and the board with respect to how they interpret that provision and that definition and apply it to wireless communication facilities. There are a number of facilities that have received permits and are currently permitted within the city of Lowell, where carriers constructed fake chimneys and fake flu pipes and attached antennas within them to conceal them, that if the interpretation were to be broadly expanded, all of those would be considered towers. And none of those have been considered towers. That's not how the zoning enforcement officer or this board has interpreted that. This, this proposal is really two parts of a proposal. One is, in this context, you had a church that had a steeple on it. The steeple fell into disrepair and was removed. There's no steeple on the, the church currently. This is a situation where the carrier looked at it as a potential win-win for two parties, actually, three: the city, the carrier, and the church, in the sense that a steeple could be reconstructed on basically the base of the church. And within that steeple, the carrier could locate their antennas. The steeple itself is going to be owned by the church. This carrier doesn't have, it's not, it's not a tower in the sense that the carrier owns colocation rights and is the party that would control who goes in there, who doesn't go in there. That would all be within the control of the church. It's just that it would be basically made out of RF-friendly material. But it's not a tower. If, if Clearwire no longer needed this site, for whatever reason, technology changed or the site became obsolete at some point in the distant future, what would be removed would be the antennas inside the steeple. The steeple itself would not be removed, it would stay there. It would just be part of the church. So the proposal itself was perceived as a win-win-win. The proposal could have been done differently. I mean, I guess the church could have separately filed for building permit to construct a steeple. And then the carrier could have come in separately and just said, "We're just installing antennas inside the steeple." But the idea was, by doing it in this way, we presented the board with perhaps some design options that they may not have had if the property owner just did it on their own. But at the end of the day, it, it was, it's not designed strictly for those antennas. If those antennas leave, the steeple still stays. It, it was designed, in a way, to complete the church. It also happens to have a benefit, which is that it can now be used to conceal antennas, whether they are Clearwire antennas or any other future carrier that, based upon where their coverage gap is, could utilize the same location. The other issue that was raised by Mr. Maxson with respect to the zoning ordinance is what type of use is required? Does this need a use variance? There isn't a particular provision in the zoning ordinance that says you only allowed one principal use or one use at all on a particular lot. This wireless communication facilities, according to the Table of Use, has, is allowed by special permit in all zoning districts. And historically, the way that's been interpreted is they're not defined as a per se mixed-use project. They're just a separate individual use that is being proposed on a particular building, lot, structure, in a particular zoning district. In this case, they're allowed use within the zoning district upon the issuance of a special permit from this board. Based upon just the past practices and how this board and the zoning enforcement officer have interpreted such facilities, it would not need a use variance or any other relief. It would just need from this board a special permit with respect to that. But, and those were just two specific questions that were raised. I know that they were open-ended questions that he had, but I did want to just address those from the applicant's perspective.
Okay, maybe it's a good time now to hear from the peer review specialist, Mr. Maxson.
Thank you. For the record, my name is David Maxson with Broadcast Signal Lab, and I'm the consultant to the board on this application. I did review the application documents and filed a report late last week. And the applicants have, I think, done a pretty good job reviewing many of the points that I made and providing information and coming up with their responses. I also did get a call from the, the city council office this afternoon and understand that an attorney plans to be here to address some of the questions that the board has, perhaps at the next meeting.
I, I think so. If this is continued, I think that we'll be able to defer some of the questions to the city solicitor's office.
Yeah, and as I think I do disclaim in this report, I am not an attorney, so I'm not making recommendations. And I want to just clarify one thing that Mr. Lacy said, that I was suggesting a particular approach for interpreting the spire, the steeple, as a tower. What I was actually doing was identifying an ambiguity in the ordinance, that depending how literally you define a tower, if the steeple is considered to be built specifically for the purpose of mounting antennas, it might be defined as a tower. But I was also acknowledging in my report that it might also be the board's pleasure to define it as a, a steeple, new construction, in which case, different rules would apply. So really, all I was doing was raising the question for applicant's counsel and for the city's counsel to, to respond to. And that was one of the sort of fundamental questions, so I ended up talking about a number of different topics on, well, if it's regarded as a tower, these sections of the ordinance apply. If it's regarded as a, a, a steeple, then these other sections of the ordinance apply. And I kind of walked through that as I went through the, my discussion. So if you look at, for instance, height limits, the height limit for a tower is 199 feet. And towers that are 60 feet to 100 feet tall, the ordinance expects to be able to co-locate at least one additional carrier. And it doesn't speak to the number of carriers below 60 feet. Meanwhile, as a spire, the way the ordinance reads is, basically, spires are not limited by the district height for structures, that you can add a cupola, a spire, dome, or of some other kind of attachment to a building, to a greater height without having to get a variance. So in that sense, the steeple is, if it's regarded as a church steeple, it certainly looks like one, then it, there's no, no height restriction there. And then there's a question of setbacks, and I, I just looked through those with the information that was available to me. And again, there's a question, if the steeple is considered literally a tower under the ordinance, then there are some questions about the setback because of the height and the distance from the property lines. But that's not a question for, for me to answer, so we'll let that work itself through with the council for the, for the city and the applicant's counsel to help convince the board what, what the right answer to the tower slash steeple question is. If it is indeed a steeple, then there is no similar setback criterion the way there is for towers. I also, there's a couple of things in here, because the, when a municipal body is making a decision about a wireless facility application, after the board or the council or whatever organ, part of the, whoever's the permit granting authority in the community, here's the case and considers it from the perspective of the ordinance and whatever state law guides that ordinance. What generally happens is that, since a board doesn't know if it's going to approve or deny a permit until it actually votes, the boards tend to review the requirements under the Telecommunications Act of 1996. And this is, again, something that advice of counsel is very helpful with, with respect to, because if the board is, ends up denying the application, and that denial ends up effectively prohibiting the provision of wireless service in the eyes of the federal court, then the applicant might sue, and then there would be a court case trying to decide whether or not there are any alternatives. So it's very helpful to evaluate the alternatives in advance in order to determine whether a denial would effectively prohibit the provision of wireless services. So what we have now is some more information from the applicant. They provided some at the outset as well, in terms of alternatives. I had suggested the one-mile radius, simply because it was a lot smaller than the five-mile radius written in the ordinance, which would have been far, far, far too distant to, to consider. And I agree, within the one-mile radius, if you already have facilities in a particular location inside that one-mile radius, you need not look any further out than where those locations are already. So with respect to one piece of language in the, in the application materials and in the ordinance, and it's a term called "colocation," and it's been the hyphenated version, C-O hyphen location. That's interpreted in two different ways, depending on the ordinance. And, and reading, since it's not defined, reading Lowell's ordinance, I infer that the colocation represented in the Lowell ordinance is the colocation where you are locating a wireless facility where another wireless facility already exists, whether it's on a tower or on the roof of a building. And that's a very common use of the term in ordinances. The Federal Communications Commission, on the other hand, uses the term "colocation" spelled the old-fashioned way, C-O-L-L-O-C-A-T-I-O-N, without a hyphen and with two L's. And they refer to that as the attachment of a wireless facility to any existing structure. So their idea is that you colocate your equipment with an existing structure, you're not building a new structure. Whereas the ordinance interprets it as you're colocating your equipment where someone else has wireless equipment already, where someone else has already been permitted. And so as we read through the applicant's responses to the questions, and we read through the ordinance, we have to look at this in terms of what colocation is for the ordinance. But then, we also have to look at it in other terms, that again, I think if counsel has the opportunity to answer questions about my report, this will be one of those questions. The FCC passed a declaratory ruling on November 18th of last year, and that ruling said, "You have a limited amount of time to hear an application." Now, for the most part, the wireless companies are being flexible, because they understand that deliberative bodies have to be deliberative. But for a, an FCC colocation, the use of an existing structure, the FCC says you get 90 days to hear and decide on the application. After that time, if the parties don't agree jointly to continue the process, the applicant has the right to go to federal court and ask for a, a decision on, on their case. So I just raised that because I know local boards have been working with their counsel and working with the counsel for the applicant to make sure that those criteria, those ducks are in a row, that you indeed have a colocation application as opposed to a new tower application, and therefore, the 90-day period applies. The FCC allows you 150 days to review an application for a new tower. So there's some of that stuff involved in, in the process of just dotting i's and crossing t's. In the submission requirements, it, the applicant asked for a waiver of an inventory of existing telecommunications towers and tall structures. And I'm not sure if that means telecommunications towers and telecommunications tall structures, or if it's just towers, telecommunications towers and tall structures. And so that's why I put to the applicant the question about, well, are there other wireless facilities out there that you could colocate at in the ordinance sense? Because the ordinance calls for that as well. Are there tall structures that we've missed? Are there buildings that might be taller than the, the proposed steeple is, or, you know, in suitable locations? And so the applicant has responded to some extent to that inquiry. I'll, if this continues, I'll reflect more on that and make sure that, I think, all the bases have been covered after reviewing the materials they submitted tonight. Then I did raise, as perhaps the one opportunity that had not been considered, as far as I could tell, and they addressed it tonight, is the Duck Island location. And I think you hear, you've heard in the discussion, the exchange between the applicant and the board, this question of whether a tower kind of construction in an industrial kind of a location is more or less visually objectionable than a new steeple on an existing church in a residential area. And that's something that the board will have to consider and balance. And I do also agree that there is, I've helped numerous communities develop requests for proposals for wireless facilities on municipal property. And there is a process, it does take time. So I don't fault the applicant for saying, "As far as we're concerned, it'll take too much time, let's just get on with it." On the other hand, if there is a compelling reason to pursue that route, because there's perhaps a consideration that it will be a significantly better result... perhaps a consideration that it will be a significantly better result for the community, then you might want to pursue that option of seeing what it would take to get an RFP going on a site. I'm a little less concerned about the applicant's concern that if they answer the RFP, they might lose the bid, because for the most part, what happens when these RFPs are structured, they're structured for co-location. We did one in Dover, Massachusetts, where we knew numerous wireless companies were interested, and we made sure that the tower had room for everyone. And so the top bidder got the top of the tower, the next highest bidder got the next position on the tower, and so on. So you kind of balance the height of the tower with the amount of co-location, the space available on the site, and you do an RFP. But again, I think that's something that council will be able to help advise as to whether it's, there's any fruit on that tree.
Right. Are you aware of any inquiry into an RFP for Duck Island? My understanding is there was some inquiry to...
Yeah, I have no, I have no connection to that at all, so I would not, I would not have any information.
Okay.
Even if there were some. Now, the other question is co-location at this location, at the church, as proposed. The applicant seems to sidestep it by saying that it's not, I may be misinterpreting, but, you know, not their problem, not a concern at this site. And I would say that with the idea that if it were a tower, it's from 60 feet up that an additional co-locator is expected. But setting that all aside, once you have a steeple, and the applicant gave a number of examples and photographs of steeples that have multiple carriers occupying them, and maybe the next guy is at 45 feet, and that might be adequate for serving a neighborhood at a time that another company comes in and wants to do what Clearwire is doing with lots of small sites to provide lots of, basically what they're doing is they're trying to provide lots of capacity with residential quality signals, you know, signals that get into the homes reliably. And to do that, they use low-power facilities that cover small footprints rather than big towers with higher-power facilities. So I think it would be a reasonable condition to require them to design and construct the steeple in such a way that it does have, it doesn't preclude the use of it for additional co-locators in the future. I think there would be room for antennas below the Clearwire antennas as proposed. I did have a question about the height. I didn't see the height indicated on the drawings. All I saw was a narrative that said the height was going to be 55 feet. If I, and I think I see a new number now.
Number 55 feet.
Very good. So we have a drawing.
Number...
Right.
And so basically, it's, basically, it's like a pad, so have...
Right, right. Well, so, it's recorded, yeah.
So it's...
All right, very good. Thank you. Is that a plan that's been on the record already?
I think so.
Because the plan I had didn't have that indication.
Yeah, there were, there were two that were submitted, so if that did not have the indication, then...
Okay, very good, thank you. This is sometimes what happens, is I, we think all the materials have been sent to me, but...
That question came up before about, you know, where actually the beginning of the tower is going to be, so what are we talking about? What is the 55 feet?
Yep.
So I think we asked that question at one of the first meetings, because I don't think that was in there, or maybe it was in there later, but...
Yeah.
We had the same question.
And then again, it was verified tonight, so I think we've certainly asked enough and...
So it's, so everybody knows, the proposal is 55 feet from the ground.
From the ver, from the ground to the very top of the steeple structure, but not including any decoration or lightning protection.
But we keep referring to a 55-foot steeple, so I think that's a little misleading. It's not actually a 50, 55-foot steeple.
Right, it's 55-foot-high steeple.
Right.
It's not 55 feet tall, but it's 55 feet high.
Starting at 28 feet or something.
Right.
So, just so everybody knows.
Yeah, yeah, anything to confuse the issue. And I also looked into, you know, a couple of other things that are routine for us to look at, and one is regarding the emissions from the facility. And as you probably know, the Congress in the Telecommunications Act of 1996 says the only criteria that these facilities have to comply with are the FCC criteria, which, personally, my experience in the last 25 years of working with communications facilities as a safety officer, those criteria are quite sensible and reasonable. And I reviewed the application, reviewed the materials, and compared them to the standards, and this facility will be compliant with the safety limits by a very large margin. So there is, should be no concern about the emissions from the facility.
Or any health-related issues.
Well, that's, yes, and specifically that. But they're compliant, they would be compliant, as I say, by a large margin, a big safety margin, with the federal standards. So that's all that the board can deliberate on, is those standards. And the second thing was a question about FAA regulations. Now, something this tall ordinarily is not an issue, especially if it's surrounded by other things that are close to the same height, if it's not near an airport, all that sort of thing. And the, my initial reaction was, you're right, there should be no concern with FAA. But I did suggest the applicant at least go through the motions and do the due diligence, and do a input on an FCC website that allows you to determine if you even have to notify the FAA of your construction. And it looks like they have the answer here that says, "No notification required." So that's good. They now have the document for the record that confirms that there's no reason to notify the FAA, and therefore, there's no reason to put a light at the top of the structure. Then I raised the question, only because I've run into this in other processes where there was some question about whether the use of a wireless facility was an accessory use. Applicant's counsel made reference to it. If this continues, I'm sure that city council will also weigh in on that question. And...
Can I ask a question? I mean, I think...
Yes, please, go ahead.
If the, if a viable alternative is Duck Island, and that, I mean, to me, really is an industrial site, and when you look across it on the river, there's nothing, in my opinion, a tower there is not going to have any adverse effect on that view. So how viable is that site, if that's a fair question? I mean, is it's...
Well, the applicant indicates that in terms of coverage, it's viable at the height of 110 feet above ground or higher.
Right. And that's lower to where the end of Belvedere is, you're going down, so the actual top of that tower is going to be probably no higher than the proposed steeple.
Right, in terms of elevation above mean sea level.
Right, right.
Yes, that's correct. But it's, so much has to do with the context of the site and what the view lines are and that sort of thing. Gentlemen over here, the question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Maxon, and thank you for the obvious terrific work you've done in preparing this review. The one line that I interpreted, and your job is to be as objective as you can, the one line that strikes me as being the most unobjective, if that's what you were...
Opinionated, yeah.
Yeah. Hence, a Duck Island facility might make for a good complement to M A B O 5, 5, or S 5501A, which is basically telling me that it would add to the coverage for that particular area. And then you suggested that in your interpretation, the only other possibility for additional coverage would be at the end of, the northern end of Wentworth Avenue, possibly. So the question would be, that's what we should take literally, that you think it would be a good complement to an existing structure they already have? And then, secondly, the height of 100 feet, which the petitioner has mentioned, in your expertise, would that be a height that would be adequate, or could it be less or higher? I'm just curious, I guess.
Great questions. And this is a moving target that we're looking at here. I think I use the word "may" make a good compliment, because I have not, I have not specifically analyzed it using Clearwire's criteria, not having had it put on the record to use. So what I did is I looked at the terrain and used my understanding of having worked with these kinds of coverage analyses for decades. And I looked at it, and I saw what was, would be a pretty clean line of sight across the river and up the hill. And the thing is, if you think about illuminating a salad bowl, you can put a lamp on the rim and shine down into it, or you can put a lamp on the bottom and shine up. So if you have something down on Duck Island, and it is shining uphill, it's not a big deal. So what struck me was a very strong possibility that it would work, and the applicant has agreed that in terms of coverage, it would work. Now, the applicant has posed 110-foot, it was 110, right? Height, more or less. And what, if there were an application for it at 110 feet, the ordinance says, you know, "Show us what the minimum necessary height is." At that point, you would say, "Well, how low can you go?" And then you'd have them, you know, cut it by 20 or 30 feet and see what happens with different heights, and kind of bracket the range that would be an effective range for one or more wireless carriers. Now, the thing is, because Wentworth Avenue kind of goes up between the two hills and back, there gets a point where there may not be enough throw from Duck Island to get all the way back the way the proposed facility on the church would. And that's enough, again, something we wouldn't know really well until we looked at the coverage modeling and evaluated how effective that would be. And that's why I held out the possibility that if they, even if Duck Island were unsatisfactory to them because it would miss the last part of Wentworth Avenue, there could be other ways to fill that remainder.
Corey, do you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Paxton, thank you again for the peer review. Well done. I found it very informative and educational. Thank you.
Thank you.
But I do have a question now. Here we are, trying to discover our alternative location seems to be the big issue tonight. Now, and it seems Clearwire has explored roughly 10 other locations, and according to your peer review, you feel they've done their due diligence in that regard. However, how about alternative technology? Now, back in late December, Mr. Waika, who's here tonight, did an outstanding presentation on what other small cities and towns do throughout the Commonwealth. For instance, Martha's Vineyard uses canisters on telephone poles. And I see nothing, which, I mean, that technology was an outstanding presentation, seems to have gone by the wayside, so. Is that, I see nothing in Clearwire that they've explored it. I see nothing in your peer review as an alternative. So please, can you educate the board in the, but is this an option?
Thank you. Is there a distributed antenna system for another company in Lowell? Has the board had to approve anything like that, or has that gone in on its own?
I don't think anything's come before this board, but I think the applicant's did address that at one meeting.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, so there is.
It's, okay, it was city council, because it was on rights of way? Yeah. Yes, it's my understanding that a company called ExteNet, E-X-T-E-N-E-T, constructed a distributed antenna system, DAS, in this area for a company called MetroPCS. They've also done it in Brockton and the Providence area, five different towns in and around Providence, and a number of other locations that are densely populated and urban. So the reality is, yes, a PCS network could work. One of the difficulties with Clearwire is that the technology that they use has a little bit more stringent requirements in terms of time delays between points in the system. So the technology they'd use for a distributed antenna system would be a little bit different than what MetroPCS is using. I could be more specific about that, but basically, you have, the typical model is you have what's called a base station hotel, some kind of a location, usually in a commercial area, where you put the equipment that you normally find at the bottom of a tower. And then you run, instead of running cables up a tower, you run fiber optic lines down the streets, and you put these little antenna nodes on the poles, and little small electronic boxes. And they put out low power, and they cover a wide area quite effectively when it's densely developed. So it's a little more challenging for Clearwire to do that, because they can't necessarily plug into the basic, the fundamental design of the network that was designed for a PCS kind of a communication, a MetroPCS service. That doesn't mean it's impossible, and it's certainly a fair question to, that I can work with, and we can also ask the applicant to pursue a little bit more thoroughly by perhaps developing a model of what that would look like in terms of coverage.
When you say under the street, does that require excavation, or is it...
Well, if there are utility poles above ground, then they can be attached to the utility poles, as long as there's space, and just as telephone lines and cable TV lines are attached to those poles. And they have similar rights as telephone companies to attach those cables to the poles. So any place where there is underground, they might have to do, in Back Bay, they did, what they did is, did one of these micro slices through the pavement and laid the cable in that slice, and then paved over it. So it was pretty close to the surface, but a quick installation, and it's part of, you know, the mapping of what's in the streets.
But they can acquire that technology, right? Fairly easily?
Well, yeah, and I don't like to call it technology for a couple of reasons. One is, it's such a broad word. It's already the technology the wireless companies use, for the most part. It's still radio communications, it's still, radio communications have protocols at different layers, this is geeky stuff, but, and so they're still using the same protocols to move the information from the, from the control center out to the city, and from the city out to the antenna. And just one of the fundamental differences is that you're, you're moving it on a private fiber optic network to its endpoint, rather than using the microwave dishes that they're proposing to use, that you see in the drawing, or rather than the telephone company connections that many of the companies use for their connections. So it's, I like to call it different architecture, using the same building blocks, for the most part, it's just that you're organizing them differently.
Wouldn't that have less of an impact on the neighborhood than constructing a tower or a steeple? If those telephone poles already exist...
Yes, they're in place, Mr. Chairman.
And they are, I mean, the telephone poles are there, so would it just mean, it would almost go unnoticed once they...
Well, I think that's, that's the thing. There is, you know, this general recognition, it has been for the last 20 years, of this idea of stealth, that if you can put antennas in something that doesn't look like it even supports antennas, that that's a, that's good planning, master planning, that's good design. And on the other side is the idea of using existing utility infrastructure. You'll end up with a can of some kind on top of the pole, and some extra metal boxes on the pole that has the can on it, and every, whatever, quarter mile, or third of a mile, or eighth of a mile, somewhere in that range, you'd have antennas on utility poles. And, you know, applicants sometimes argue that, well, you have more antennas, you have more of these new things cluttering the space. And then the counterargument is, yes, but it's using existing clutter to clutter the space. So it's often just a preference, a balancing, you know, one against the other, the invisible facility versus the visible one that's on, well, on Duck Island or on utility poles.
Okay. All right, you'll be around if anybody has any questions?
Sure.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Okay. What I think I'd like to do is open this up to the public now and get their feedback. Do you have...
I just, if you could just quickly respond to a couple of points that David just made, just to clarify.
Okay, briefly.
Very briefly. Just one of, one of the questions was about co-location, and just to clarify, what I'm saying is, Clearwire is not opposed to co-location. If you actually look at the plans... If you actually look at the plans, the antennas will be here, there's nothing prohibiting another carrier from using space. It's just simply that I don't know if another carrier has a need for a facility in that particular area. But there would be space theoretically inside a steeple if someone wanted to use, to co-locate there. And then I also wanted to have A.J., the RF engineer, just briefly address the DAS issue.
Okay. And what issue is this?
The distributor.
Okay.
Alternative technology.
Good evening. My name is A.J. Savanam, I'm the radio frequency engineer for Clearwire. And as the town consultant, Mr. Paxton mentioned, there are some issues, technical issues, with the technology that Clearwire uses, which is a YMAX technology. The YMAX technology is a very new technology. No other carrier in the U.S. is using it other than Clearwire right now. So the equipment that's made for DAS networks, there's no vendors currently, I know of who makes equipment that we can use on a DAS network. And the difference is like, we cannot use the existing networks like the one that MetroPCS has, because those networks were tuned for their technology, which they use CDMA. The problem with that is, the older technologies like GSM, which AT&amp;T uses, or CDMA, which Sprint or MetroPCS uses, they get, the distance they can cover, as far as they can go from the node, the base station, is higher comparatively to what the YMAX technology can use. Just for references, like CDMA can go 30 miles from the base station or the hotel they call. And this 30 miles is not the radial distance in air, it's just the range of the fiber. Fiber gets routed underground over the poles, and that adds to the length of the fiber. They add some redundancies to it, so that even adds more. So the existing DAS network are very fine-tuned for those technologies. And right now, this is a very realistic limitation that we have in terms of DAS network, to provide a solution based on DAS network.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can I address, you can go ahead, because I have a question for you. Just before I get the-
Mr. Paxton mentioned the tow air for the FAA airspace. I just want to submit this for the record.
And that shows that there's no issues.
Exactly.
Okay. And I guess my last question for council probably is best, I just want to make sure we don't have any issue with the shot clock, the 90-day shot clock issue. My understanding is, and I think we addressed that at the last meeting, that this is a mutual agreement on to continue these the last couple of meetings, so.
Yeah, it's, that wouldn't be a problem. I mean, I know that the solicitor's office may want to formally just, you know, they may have a form to just have an extension of time with respect to the shot clock. And my client's only willing to work with the city with respect to that.
Okay.
But that's not a problem. We understand that these were mutual-
Thank you.
-extensions.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open it up to the public, get some input from the folks who've been waiting patiently. Anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Ken Gordon, and I am pastor of Lowell Mission Church located at 403 Andover Street. And I just want to say thank you to the zoning board and others who have come out this evening just to discuss this petition this evening. I'd like to say that I'm here with some members and friends of the church to speak in favor of adding a steeple to our church building. I'd like to just tell you a little bit about us. Our church has been ministering to the Southeast Asian community in Lowell for more than 15 years. First at a historic building at 211 Pawtucket Street, and for the past two and a half years at 403 Andover Street. And the petition before the zoning board is to add a steeple to our church building with wireless equipment installed inside of it. The building has had a steeple before, first when it was built in 1968 as Lowell Assembly of God, and again as the Hindu temple. The steeple and domes that were present when the Hindu temple owned it were removed by Lowell Mission Church when they purchased the building and made renovations. It has always been our intent to rebuild the steeple, which is a well-known symbol of faith throughout New England. Right now, we have the opportunity to do that with Clearwire, who wishes to establish their wireless network in our city. This works out well for us as we get our steeple built. It works out well for Clearwire, our growing telecommunications company. It also works out for their larger community, which will have another wireless option. I understand that some neighbors have concerns about this petition, and I would like to address just a few of them. Let me say that as my guiding principle in this matter, I'm using a quote from the Bible where the Apostle Paul says in Romans 12, verse 18, "If it is possible, as far as it depends on you, live at peace with everyone." And we are blessed to be in the neighborhood we're in and have the neighbors we do. I would like to work this matter out as peaceably as possible. One concern that was brought up earlier, back in October and November, I believe, was that the property was in disrepair before we owned it and might fall into disrepair again. Let me assure you that it won't under our ownership. Some neighbors have already testified to you, the zoning board, that we've done much to maintain the upkeep and improve the property, and will continue to do so. We've repainted the parsonage, done some landscaping, and made improvements to the inside of the church building itself. We also believe we've been a good neighbor, as we've opened up our parking lot for people in the neighborhood who needed extra parking for special events in their lives. Another concern that I've heard some express is that it's all about the money by LMC accepting rental income from Clearwire. I can assure you that the church board has considered this matter prayerfully, and we are at peace with our decision. And as you heard, there are many other churches that are doing the same thing. The rental money will be used to further the outreach ministries of the church within the community of Lowell. And a third major concern I've heard from some neighbors is that they're afraid that the steeple would be a monstrosity and eyesore destroying the neighborhood. Many people have referred to it as a 55-foot cell tower. Let me say, as you've seen the pictures, this is simply not true. Many have seen the steeple's rendering from the architect of the steeple, and our property was chosen by Clearwire because of its location and availability for unobstructed lines of sight within the needed radius. Some would say that the church building now looks out of place without a steeple. I believe the current steeple design will add to the beautification of the church building and to the neighborhood. In closing, I would just like to reemphasize that it has always been our intent to replace and build our own steeple. We intend to do so no matter what the outcome of this hearing. We intend to do that with graceful design and keeping with the prevailing design standards and aesthetics of the community. We look forward to the board's decision.
Thank you, sir. And you said you had some supporters here?
Yes.
Rather than everybody say the same thing, if I could just see a show of hands, anybody here in favor of this petition?
For the record, Madam Secretary, approximately about a dozen hands in support.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor, address the board in favor of this petition? Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, zoning board and chairman. Thank you for your time this evening. I apologize for my voice, I have a cold today. I have a statement from another Belvidere resident. May I either read that or give that to you for your consideration?
You can read it right for-
It's short. This is a resident at Stackpole Street, 261, her name is Karen Corvay, she had to work this evening. Dear members of the zoning board, I would like to voice my support for the addition of a steeple to Lowell Mission Church at 403 Andover Street. As I'm sure the board is aware, the building has had a steeple twice before, once when it hosted a Christian church and once when it hosted a Hindu temple. In fact, it is a bit unusual now to see the base of, the base for a steeple, but no steeple, almost as if the building is unfinished. I support this project for several reasons. It will complete the aesthetic look for the building, an important consideration in the Belvidere neighborhood. Second, in all of, in all of New England, a steeple is an instantly recognizable symbol of a place of worship. Lowell Mission Church seems to be asking only for the religious identity and freedom enjoyed by all other religious groups that request it. And third, the fact that the property has two steeples, has had two steeples already indicates the tolerance and acceptance that the neighborhood has shown religious institutions over the years. I, for one, would like to see that fairness and even-handedness continue. That's from Karen Corvay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now my own statement as well, please.
Go ahead.
I know that the zoning board is very familiar, of course, with Massachusetts General Law relevant sections as well, as well as the City of Lowell Master Plan, the relevant sections. But I do want to just highlight a few lines from those briefly, because it will bring, again, to the forefront the key issues that are at play here, which is that Lowell Mission Church wishes to build a steeple on its church, on its church building that belongs to it. So the decision of the board in this matter should be in accord with the spirit of the relevant laws. And from Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section A, Part 3, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit, regulate, or restrict the use of land or structures for religious purposes on land owned by a religious sect or denomination, provided, however, that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures." And I know that another ordinance in consideration here was the safety ordinance, which has also been met. So both the height and FCC requirements have both been met. And the purpose, as you know, of this Massachusetts General Law is to ensure that private ownership as well as religious, rights of religious organizations could be upheld within the needs of the zoning board and zoning ordinances. So I urge you to keep that in mind as you make your decision, because that is really the key point, as the pastor has made, the church does wish to build a steeple on its property. Oh, I forgot to mention, my name is Rebecca Hall, and I'm also a Belvidere resident at Stackpole Street. And then finally, as I conclude, the City of Lowell Master Plan indicates on page 41 that its purpose is to enhance the appearance, distinctiveness of its neighborhoods, and Lowell will foster a sense of solidarity and pride among residents, strengthening community bonds and reducing behaviors such as crime and littering. Also, the unique character of each of Lowell's neighborhoods should be preserved and enhanced. And the plan's purpose is to support development and sustenance of communities that are diverse, lively, possess unique character, and offer a wealth of opportunities for a high quality of life. Lowell's renaissance of the past 25 years has enabled the city to preserve and enhance, excuse me, these very qualities in the community. And the master planning process is designed to build upon the momentum caused by recent revitalization efforts. So if the church is allowed to build a steeple on its own building, this would be a symbol of religion, a steeple with a cross on the top would add to the pride of place in Lowell's richness. It would be, show the freedom of religion is that, that we are able to, that the church is able to express. And freedom of religion is at the foundation of our pride as New Englanders and as Lowellians. This is not an infringement into new open spaces. It is building a steeple on a church that architecturally should have a steeple. As you can see from the pictures, there's already a platform there that aesthetically does not look appropriate, just sitting there without a steeple rising from it. This is not a new development, but the revitalization of an existing building that maintains the current fabric and upgrades the quality and aesthetics of the property. Thank you very much for hearing my statement.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor, in favor, ma'am?
Sure, my name is Rhea, and I'm-
What's your name, ma'am, miss?
Excuse me?
You have to state your name and your address, full name.
Rhea Gordon, 403 Andover Street, Lowell.
Thank you.
I just want to come here tonight and say that a picture is worth a thousand words. And being in the situation that I have been in with a lot of my friends saying things about a cell tower being built and what are you thinking of, I wish that throughout this whole process, that this picture could have been shown, because it's clearly a steeple, and a steeple that means a lot to our church. And I hope that this board would really take it into consideration that the steeple would really beautify that neighborhood and that it completes the look of the church. And that's why I'm here tonight, to say that I am in support of it. And I know you've been going back and forth about different locations, but just sitting there and not knowing much about it, the easiest thing to do, to me, seems to put up the steeple. So I hope you will take that into consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. And that's the point of a public hearing, is there is a lot of misinformation about not only this petition, but most petitions that do come before us. And the point of the public hearing is to sort those issues out and to show folks who are interested one way or the other, what's actually being proposed. So I do think the picture makes a big difference, but they have been progressively at each meeting giving us more information, just a very involved project, and that's why it's taken so long. So anybody else here wishing to speak in favor of this petition, ma'am?
Good evening, my name is Michelle Rosenberg. I live at 44 Sixth Street. I attend Lowell Assembly of God Church and Pastor Gordon's Church. On special occasions, our churches do things together. I think that a steeple would be a lot prettier to look at than a big tower in Duck Pond. I live on top of Centerville. I could see, I'd much rather see a steeple from my home than a tower. A tower definitely, I mean, a steeple would definitely finish off that church. Our church used to be there, we had a steeple. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, how big was the steeple that was there when you were there at that church?
I don't know, the height.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor, ma'am?
My name is Savani Kio, and I live on 141 Parker Street in Lowell. And I just want to say that I am supporting the steeple. Growing up in a church, I feel like a steeple and church go together. And I think the steeple is an architectural art that goes with the church. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor? Hearing on that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition to this petition? Sir?
My name is Richard Dokus, I live on 54 Pawtucket Ave. I'm opposed not so much for the actual steeple, although we talked about locations, and one location that wasn't mentioned at all was Colley Stadium. Is there any particular reason why that wasn't looked at? There's probably 80 to 100-foot poles at Colley.
That's a good point. We talked about all these other-
What's the address?
Douglas Road.
It's probably-
Approximately 600 Douglas Road, I would say.
You've probably got at least six to eight 100-foot poles over there.
So if this is Rogers, where would it be in location here?
Wentworth Avenue, it would probably be right in here.
In here?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just pretty sure this is where the schools are located right here.
If you go down Wentworth, if you go down Clark Road, I don't see it here, but Andover Street is running this way to Church Street West.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's say-
It's due north of Phoenix Ave.
Yeah, it's closer to-
Exactly.
It's by a quarter of a mile from, at least a quarter of a mile, maybe a half a mile from Phoenix Ave, closer to your church.
Exactly, so this particular site right here is Phoenix Ave. So if you were to move a quarter of a mile, you'd be far closer to this particular location than you would be to this location. So not only would it not be providing service into this, I mean, this is Phoenix Ave right here.
You're probably located right over here.
Yeah, the stadium that's right over here, again, you know, from my experience, I'm looking at the coverage maps and driving the area, I did see that. And it is well within the coverage range of what we'd be supplying with Site MA-BOS 5938A, which is the existing AT&amp;T Monopole located on Phoenix Ave.
Right, but at Colley Stadium, now that Richard's brought up, I do know that there are, I think, three or four high poles there.
Light poles.
Because, and I think there's antenna poles. For some reason, I'm thinking, I mean, that's where all the football games are, all the activities. There's also, the stadium is built, it goes up, and I think there's an antenna on top of the highest point where you, the media watches the games there. And that, you know, if you're looking at, it's much closer than Long Meadow, say, to your site, much closer than anything that we talked about. It's pretty much in the neighborhood.
I mean, we'd be more than happy to take a look at it, to just to determine exactly how far away it is and provide some propagation maps that would show the coverage if that's-
I mean, somewhat lower as you go, it's down gradient definitely.
Yeah, understood, yep.
But you're talking about a high, there's already, I mean, I think if you look at the, up the stairs to the highest point where the media goes to watch the games, I think that's already at least 80 feet possibly, and I think there's a tower- And I think there's a tower or some sort of antenna pole on top of that.
We'd be more than happy to take a look at it.
Okay. That's one thing, I don't know how we missed that, but that's a good point.
My other question is, what type of apparatus is going to go on the outside, if it is going to go on the outside of the church, that will support this antenna with regards to, I don't know what you actually call them, but there's going to be some type of adverters or something to take the signal and process it?
I can briefly answer that. On the outside of the church? Nothing.
On the outside of the steeple, he...
On the outside of the steeple.
There's going to be some type of cable coming down from the actual antennas to bring a signal to some type of device.
Cable comes through, the cable comes through the inside of the steeple and then goes through the existing electrical wiring and routing to the existing electrical room and pops out the side of the building right next to the cabinet. So the cabling is completely concealed inside the church.
And these are small cabinets.
How, what is the physical dimensions of the cabinets that will be used now and possibly in the future for other carriages?
They are, they should be in the plans.
A small what?
Refrigerator.
Refrigerator.
So the small...
Small refrigerator.
Flip to the actual page. So you can see it's about four feet, six inches in height by about two feet. It's about four feet, six inches in height by about two feet, two foot right angle square, so two feet by two feet on the base. And again, if I may add, based on our meeting with the historic board and the historic commission, one of the conditions that they proposed to be included, if the zoning board were to rule in favor of this application, would be to move the equipment to the back of the building.
To the rear of the building? Yes.
Exactly. So again, I think that would ultimately, I do agree with the historic board's assessment that that would ultimately also mitigate some of the visual impact as you're driving along Andover Street from the side.
Is it possible, if this was, proposal was approved, and the stadium wasn't selected as a better site, you guys, could this equipment be put inside the facility? It cannot?
No. Unfortunately, with the size of the church and the spaces that are currently being used, the only room that we could actually look at as a candidate inside was the electrical room. And then based on the setbacks, the equipment cabinet has to be from various panels, it simply couldn't fit in the electrical room, which is why we came to the side of the building.
How about on the, I assume it's the passage of the church? There's a cellar, there has to be a large cellar and a hall.
No, so, oh, you mean the actual house set in the back?
Yeah.
To be honest with you, we didn't look at that as a candidate. I think what we, you know, again, it's the cable run that we are concerned about coming through and staying inside the church. So again, I mean, that would be far more intrusive to run the cables out the back of the church into that existing building. You know, I think what we are willing to comply with, with the historic board, with the historic board's recommendation in mind, is to move the cabinet to the back of the church.
So you could put it in the rear of the building and conceal it with fencing or bushes or whatnot?
Fencing and bushes, whatever the board would require in the rear of the church...
And that's about the size of a outdoor air conditioner compressor, but just square?
Exactly. So it's about four and a half feet in height by two feet, two feet by two feet wide.
Now, would another carrier, if another carrier come onto that antenna, would they also need a similar cabinet?
Potentially, yes.
So you could literally have two to three of them?
Rich, just everything, just it's the way it goes, but everything has to be, go through the board and back out, just rather than exchange to another person. So you can ask me and I can, and he can answer. So your question is...
Chairman, if we, if we were to get more carriers on that particular antenna...
Right.
Would they in fact need cabinets approximately four and a half feet tall by two and a half feet wide?
So your question is someday we're going to have a bunch of cabinets out there?
It's possible to have two or three?
We can let him address that.
Now, Mr. Chairman, we could put a condition that there to be no co-locators on the site as well. Am I right?
Well, I think the law requires that they allow that, right? I mean, I don't think we can preclude it.
If I could, anyone who co-locate would have to come back to this board. So if they, presumably they would need some cabinet to work with their equipment, but they would have to come back before this board. And similarly, they would have to screen their equipment, conceal it, hide in some way.
Right. And I don't think this board has any, has ever had a problem with petitions that are looking to co-locate for the most part, because that's what we want. We'd rather have them housed in existing structures rather than create new ones. This is a case where you're talking about building a steeple, and then, you know, I do know that you said at the beginning of the first meeting way back when that the church was looking to do this anyway. So at some point, we're going to have a steeple there anyway. It's just a matter of, you know, is it going to be their steeple or is it going to be the church's steeple? And how much authority do we have over regulating?
One other question I have, Mr. Chairman, is, is there any noise that emits from these cabinets?
I get, yeah, I mean, there is some noise that is emitted from the cabinets, but between, with the fencing and with the actual landscaping, it would more than likely be inaudible at the nearest property lines.
And how do we determine that in advance? Because it's easy to say that, but then if you...
I mean, we can provide just the, I guess, the typical decibels that would be coming from the equipment cabinet in relation to, I guess, similar, similar type of equipment that would be located in residential areas and show sort of a like-for-like comparison.
Would it sound like when somebody's air conditioner kicks on or would it be something like...
Very similar, yes.
Somebody starts a tractor? I mean, I guess that's the question.
No, much more similar to an air conditioning unit. And then again, with the additional landscaping features that we included, including the fencing, landscaping, and any other conditions that the board would propose, that would again significantly cut down on, you know, the traveling of that actual noise.
Right. Is it like a humming noise? And the other question is, does it go all night?
No, it operates similar to just a traditional air conditioning unit, so it's not a constant sound. But we can, we can have noise specs for the specific equipment.
Right. That might help. Because if you're one of the director butters and you've got your windows open on a warm summer night, I mean, it's a fair question.
No, we understand.
That's all I have to say at this time.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Mark?
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Mark Goldman, fifty-eight Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass. And I'm speaking in opposition to this. I think a better location would be the Duck Island Wastewater Treatment Plan. We're talking about neighborhood character, and I have no, and listened to one of the proponents who talked about the Lowell Master Plan and neighborhood character and the steeple. We're not here to talk about the steeple as such. The reason we're all here tonight is because of the special permit calling for telecommunications in spirit by Clearwire. That's the issue tonight, not about the steeple as such. And for the record, you know, I think that if you had one, if the church had one originally, they have every right to have another one. But they need to go through some other process to get it. This is not the way to do it. They want private, they want private tenants, three panels, two dish antennas. That is a lot. I don't think that this is the right location. We're talking neighborhood character. It does not fit in it. And I urge the board to continue it, let's see what the city solicitors office says, and let them really take a hard, hard look at Duck Island wastewater. And I think the idea of the Colley Stadium may be a good one, as long as it's not obtrusive and it doesn't interfere, you know, with whatever is happening at the stadium. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition? Ma'am?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. My name is Terry O'Connor. I live at one twenty-four Mansa Street in Lowell. I was, I'm a Lowellian. I was born in Patacaville, and I love my city. My husband, I am a volunteer, a twenty-five-year volunteer for nonprofits in Lowell, as well as a staunch supporter of the arts. My husband and I bought our home in nineteen eighty-four on one twenty-four Mansa Street. And if you've ever heard the expression, "a money pit," that's what, we've been restoring it ever since. But let me tell you, it is a labor of love. We are very proud of our home. We have put a lot of money into our home, and I am speaking here for every other neighbor who has done the same. This is a residential area. And all due respect to the pastor, I'm sure he does do wonderful work. Looking at this steeple, I don't think it's in proportion to the church. It's going to look a little weird, in my opinion. It has nothing to do personally with the pastor. However, as I said, we are very proud of our properties. We pay some of the highest taxes in Lowell. Our neighborhood is very historical. It's very beautiful, and I think that putting a tower in that area would be a travesty to the city and an insult to the rest of us. And maybe perhaps we should try changing the laws if there's no other way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition? In opposition?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Raymond Weicher from the law offices of Quahal Harvey &amp; Walsh. I'm here on behalf of my clients who are director butters and whose bedroom window faces these proposed humming cabinets at night. I'm also here to speak in opposition on behalf of my clients to the proposal and note that we do have an admission by the applicant that there is an alternative site which would provide feasible coverage. They are therefore not effectively precluded from providing coverage, provided that they have explored and eliminated all potential other sites. Whether or not they are the ones who get the actual contract to build a facility at Duck Island is irrelevant to whether or not they're capable of providing service. I would ask if I could approach and present some materials to the board?
Wait, did you give a copy to the applicant? And if you have a copy from Mr. Maxon, did you give him a copy?
I did. What I've presented is a worksheet, a very simple flow sheet on how the decisions are made and how they're reviewed in the federal court. A simple way to work your way through this location as to whether or not to grant the requested relief. And based on the confession or the admission, the all agreed upon fact that there is an alternative site, we now already know that the answer is this board is under no obligation to grant this site. It is strictly within the board's discretion as to whether or not to grant this. Now, I'm going to take a moment here to address some of the issues that have been raised. We heard a number of people who don't live in the community speak in favor. We've heard the people who have got a direct financial interest speak in favor. But we've also got the people who have a direct financial interest who live in the street and have spent their lives improving upon it, who are now going to be faced with this If I may approach again, I do have a series of letters. I have not opened them. I will not read them into the record. They're directed to the zoning board.
Sure.
But just for the record, those are seven letters prepared by butters who were unable to attend this evening due to their own work and children care or childcare schedules. There's been a lot of talk about this is about a steeple and religion. Well, I'm here to say bunk, it's not. Nobody's here asking the zoning board to build a steeple. Nobody's here asking for freedom of religion. What they're asking for is a permit to build and install a wireless communications facility at a location in a residential neighborhood. Now, we've heard talk that, hey, we'll have a steeple anyway? More power to you. The question is whether or not this board is going to grant a wireless communications facility the right to set up at that location, not whether or not there's a religious issue, not whether or not there's a steeple issue. Nobody's here saying no to religion. What they are saying is, you're not going to install this in this location when there is a clearly more appropriate industrial facility located just across the water which can provide all the same coverage. Now, we've talked about Duck Island tonight, and yet we don't have coverage maps. And the question is, why don't we have those proposed coverage maps? Well, it's interesting because on the twenty-sixth of January, I was told by the applicant Clearwire that they would have their RF engineer look into the water treatment facility, and yet it wasn't done. When I followed up on the third of February, it still hadn't been done. When I followed up again as recently as the eighteenth of February, I received a Saturday, February twentieth email stating, "We'll have it ready for you and give you a copy tonight here at this hearing." And yet here we are tonight here at this hearing despite multiple promises to have this plot of Duck Island, and it's not done. So I would say that there's a little disingenuity going on, if I even pronounce that word correctly. But let's just call it a shell game. We've been promised that we would get a look at this other facility, and we're not being given the look. I also found an interesting comment from Mr. Maxon's remarks in that when making his evaluation of the sites, he had not been provided by the applicant Clearwire their standards for propagation. Now, we're asking for a peer review to be done, and we are withholding the information necessary in order to do the proposed evaluations. Instead, what we got are some nice maps with some color on them showing this is what we want, this is what we think we'll get, and this is what the other ones will give us. But there's no mention as to what the signal strength would be at any given location and whether or not those signal strengths are necessary. One of the things this board needs to do in determining whether or not there's a gap in coverage is to determine what the required signal strength is, what the functional or workable signal strength is, whether or not the proposed facility will meet it, and at what limits that signal strength drops off. All we've been given is the green plot. Inherent in any green plot is the fact that there is a yellow and a red plot outside of it showing signal drop off as we go. We don't know what the signal strength would be if these facilities were located at any of the other proposed facilities. We've just been shown the green. We haven't been shown the yellow, and we don't know what will or will not work in those areas. So we've got issues with respect to the plots in the fact that, one, they don't say what strength we're talking about, and, two, while we've been promised on multiple occasions a plot of Duck Island, it still wasn't prepared tonight, a month after it was promised. I mean, that's somewhat troubling, is that a month has gone by and it hasn't been promised. It hasn't been delivered. And I would ask myself, why is that? Well, why is it? Because we have the admission tonight that it's a perfectly suitable alternative location. So this board is within its discretion right now to take a vote and deny this facility. I think I've already addressed the forty-eight, section three issues. This is not about a use of land for religious purpose. The land is already being used for religious purpose. This is about a use of land for a commercial purpose, a commercial benefit purpose, co-located on a religious facility, an already existing and operating religious facility, but a commercial purpose co-located there. So when you hear people stand up and say, "This is about a church, this is about a mission, this is about practicing religion, this is a forty-eight, section three," bunk, all right? It's a load of lies. It's not about that. And anybody who stands here and says it, I will call them a liar. This is about a commercial enterprise being located in a residential neighborhood, and numerous discussions regarding these locations of these facilities. Oh, we can't give up the space inside the building to locate the humming boxes. We're going to put them out back on Penn Tuckett Avenue so that everybody in the neighborhood can look at them and listen to them and have their bedroom windows closed all year round because they don't want to hear them. Well, I say that's wrong. If you were to go by and inspect the place, it's dilapidated. It is not well-kept. You already have violations readily apparent. We talked about this parking lot that's been opened up to everybody. Well, somebody should go down and file a complaint with respect to that parking lot because all of the green space that was required when it was built has been paved over. It's already in violation, and we're talking about giving a benefit to a violator, which is wrong and should not be done by this board. And I would also state that we did have an earlier comment regarding the building of fake chimneys as a potential with respect to places to conceal facilities rather than building a disproportionate steeple. There's already a building located directly behind this church that is several stories taller than the church, which already has chimneys on it. And yet we haven't heard anybody say, "Put it in my house." Instead, it's been, "Stick it in the neighbor's yard, away from us." Well, that speaks to the quality and nature of the applicants. I would say that anybody who would seek to impose a burden on their neighbors for their own financial benefit is not the type of person who should be given the benefit of undertaking such an opportunity or undertaking such a business within this city. I would instruct you to take a look or ask at some time, you take a look through the worksheet. You basically have to go through and you have to determine, first of all, whether or not there's been a demonstrated gap in coverage, and then find out whether or not that gap has been significant as defined by our courts. It's not enough that just a few houses can't get coverage. It has to be a significant gap. It's not one house, it's not ten, it's a fact... It's a fact-by-fact determination that is within this board's discretion. I would just say that any findings in favor or against should be in writing in order to comply with the Telecommunications Act and in order to withstand legal challenges one way or the other. I would also state that in the event that there is not a gap, there's no need. In the fact, if there is a significant gap, then there has to be an analysis as to whether or not there's been a complete exhaustion. The burden is 100% on the applicant and not on any member of the community to show alternative sites. Here, we already have one, which is admitted to by everyone, so we've clearly not hit an effective preclusion of service. I would urge this board to deny this application. There are several members of this community who are here and speaking, and I would say that we had a little disingenuous show of hands. I would ask if we were to show those hands again and ask how many people live within visual distance of this and will wake up and look at this proposed facility, we would have a different number of hands. I would ask how many members of this audience right now live on a street that surrounds this proposed church? And I would ask, of those people who live on a surrounding church, how many of you are within, what, two blocks of the proposed facility? We have a number of people here who've got a lot of money invested in the quality of their community, and their community is what is most important to them. Again, nobody is here speaking out against religion. I don't need to throw quotes at you from the Bible. I can simply throw facts. The fact is, there's an alternative facility, and despite the statements as to how Clearwire feels an alternative facility would be received, that's irrelevant. Their feelings don't count here. This isn't a counseling session. It's not a hold hands and get emotional. This is about what the facts are. The facts are that there is an alternative site available which would provide the coverage. The fact is, that coverage was withheld from you even though it was promised a month ago. That's the fact. Now, this board has to decide whether or not it's going to accept that kind of behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I thought I'd just see if anybody else, anybody else here wishing to speak in opposition? Ma'am?
My name is Karen Green, 91 Elliott Drive in Lowell, and I stood before you on this same issue, opposed to this. I feel exactly the same way this evening. I too, Mrs. O'Connor, purchased a money pit, and, but I am very proud of what my husband and I have done with my home. And I'm concerned about my property value with still a cell tower. You know, with all due respect, Reverend Gordon, I don't come here thinking of this as a steeple. It's a cell tower. And I consider if my property is appraised, they're going, it's going to take a shot when it, I'm down the street from a cell tower. And I don't want a 55-foot from ground to ceiling or whatever it is in my backyard. And I feel for the people on Pentucket. I'm still aways, I'm on Elliott Drive, but I'm still away from this. But I don't think it's the place. It's a residential area. It's a historical area. I am surprised that the board, you know, said it's okay, but, you know, that's their opinion. It's not my opinion. I don't think it's the place. And I feel for my neighbors, and I think that it's, it belongs in a commercial area, and it shouldn't be in our backyard. And I would be very interested to see this be taken to Duck Island. I think it's a, it's a spot, or as this gentleman brought up, Colley Stadium. I think there's other places that should be investigated, but it certainly doesn't belong on Andover Street. It's, it's not, it's not the place for this tower. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishes to speak in opposition? In opposition? Okay, hearing none, sir. Let you respond briefly.
Actually, I'd like to have Adrian. Just clarification, I certainly think you should get the advice of your solicitor's office because with all due respect to counsel, I think your solicitor could advise you on what actually constitutes an available alternative site. And in this context, there is a number of components. One, whether or not something can work from a radio frequency perspective, but also whether or not it is available. If it is a municipally-owned site and no RFP has been issued, this site is not available. And there is plenty of case law with respect to that that is, you know, that I can certainly provide to the solicitor's office, but I'm sure the solicitor's office can equally advise the board with respect to whether or not that is actually an available site. And additionally, unfortunately, we presented a lot of stuff. These are the alleged maps that we were hiding. These are the Duck Island maps. Obviously, we weren't hiding them. We just didn't get around to presenting them. But I'd like to have RJ come up. These were done at 100 feet, and just to clarify the testimony previously, what he was concluding is that you'd need in excess of 100 feet at that location. And even then, the coverage is different than what you'd get from a facility at the church.
Did we get these coverage maps?
I'm going to give you the large-size ones. All of the other ones were previously submitted in reduced size. We didn't, I just didn't have the extra copies for the smaller ones, but I'm going to submit the full-size ones to you. And we're going to obviously make copies of these.
Do you have copies for anybody here that?
No. All we have is the one large-size copy.
Okay.
So, but obviously David.
Can you pass them around?
Nope. So just explain what they represent.
Yeah, can you hold this up and have the other?
Sure. Yep. Go through the comparison.
This, this is the plot, like, the original coverage from the church side.
Sorry, I know it's going to be difficult, but you have to speak into the microphone, so.
This is the original plot that was submitted for the Lowell Church, our proposed site. And the one he's holding up on the top is at the Duck Island site at 100 feet. As you can see, everyone knows the Duck Island site is right next to the river, the lowest elevation possible on this area. And you can see, it's like not, it doesn't provide, even at 100 feet, it doesn't provide similar coverage as the church at 57 or 55 feet, Rapp Center does. Just wanted to show the difference there. Even with 100 feet, we get limited coverage.
What, didn't we talk about 110 feet?
Yeah, I haven't ran that 110 feet here, but this was like a, like a higher, like, around like 100 feet, just.
But where'd you come up with 100 feet?
Just a random number.
Why couldn't it be 110, 120? You'd capture more area, correct?
Yeah, it would. But I don't have those with me right now.
This was just to give the board an idea of what 100 feet at that location would do. Obviously, to get comparable coverage, you would need to go tall.
Right. Well, I guess the question is, is it a viable option? Can you get with a, whatever it is, 110, 120, 130-foot tower? Can you get?
We can provide coverage maps incrementally going up. It's the kind of the opposite of what Mr. Maxon said before about starting at a particular height and then going down. We can provide coverage maps showing the incremental, as you add 10 feet or as you add 20 feet, how much additional coverage you get from Duck Island. Additionally, our applicant, the applicant is willing to float a balloon at that location so that people can see how visible a tower would be at that location. But we don't have any access rights. We don't have any interest at all. But if the municipality wants to grant those access rights, we could float a balloon at that location at various heights, different balloons at different levels to give people an idea of how visible it would be at that location.
Okay, is that something you can work with the city solicitor's office on, a request to do a temporary?
We can, I mean, we can. I mean, the people who had contacted before and expressed interest was Clearwire. That's who had actually inquired about Duck Island. But we can, but, I mean, that'll be up to the city. If the city gives us those rights, then we could do that. If they don't, we can't.
Right, I understand that. That's.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
Please excuse my naivete here with the presentation made by Mr. Weicher. Correct me if I'm wrong, it's incumbent upon the petitioner, Mr. Chairman, to make the overture to find the alternative site regardless of whether or not, in your opinion, or if it is, as you state fact, that because it's a municipality, it's not readily available. That does not preclude you approaching the city and finding out whether or not it is viable and that you could work with it. Is that correct?
And Clearwire has approached the city. There is no RFP issued for Duck Island right now. So Clearwire has approached to see if Duck Island, if there was going to be an RFP issued for Duck Island, and there is no RFP issued for Duck Island. So part of the, my disagreement with counsel would be what really constitutes an available alternative. And there are case law with respect to what actually constitutes an available alternative in this context. Whether or not something not only works from a radio frequency perspective, is it available? Is it leasable? All of these are factors that get taken into account when a reviewing court looks at what was available at the time of the application.
Well, when you say the, there's not an RFP currently, I mean, why would there be? Doesn't, don't you have to ask?
No, not necessarily. There are towns that are very proactive. There are towns that, cities and towns that want to use municipally-owned facilities for wireless communication facilities, and they issue RFPs on a regular basis. And some of them will respond, but in this case, we have, you know, reached out to see if there is interest, but others are very proactive.
When did you reach out? Because the city, you know, may be interested in, in doing that.
Recently, but.
Was it, was it a month ago, two months ago?
Oh, no, not, not two months ago, no.
Last week?
Recently, probably within, within the month, yeah.
Right, so it's not unusual that there wouldn't be a response right now. I mean, maybe that's something that we can check with through the city solicitor's office to see if there's going to be something because if, if that, you know, that's a viable option and, and, you know, it's exhausted, that's one thing, but, you know, it might be something that works for everybody.
But that's also why I suggested having a balloon test because hypothetically talking about visual impacts is tougher than actually seeing a balloon.
Right, and then folks may come back here and say, you know what, we'd rather have the steeple than, than that when you do the balloon test. But I agree, you should do that. And I don't, I can't speak for the city, but I don't know why that's a minor request to do a balloon test there, so, especially if they have any interest at all in, in sending it out for an RFP.
Thank you.
And it's same with Colley Stadium, the city-owned property, so it's not a private structure there, so you, maybe try to kill two birds with one stone so we don't have to keep continuing the meeting. Yeah, I think Duck Island, it seems to me from reading Mr. Maxon's report and, you know, driving by there and viewing it, I think, in, at least in my opinion, that seems to be a very reasonable alternative if it's available. If it's not available, I agree with you 100%. It's not an alternative because it's not available, but it's definitely something that it's worth exploring. So it looks like the meeting is going to be continued till the next meeting anyway. Somebody from the city solicitor's office has informed me that they will be here at the next meeting. This actually works out better because now we know what questions they're going to be faced with, and there's some real questions that Attorney Weicher brought up that you've responded to, that are legal questions, that this board is not going to get into a legal argument. We defer that to the law department, and we'll go by what their recommendation's going to be as far as what exhausting viable options involve. So, I mean, this has been kind of drawn out, and I think it's been helpful, but if the board, any board members have any input before we take a vote to continue and refer it to the city solicitors?
So are we talking about two more potential sites?
I think what we've discussed right now specifically is the option of Colley Stadium because it's already has a structure that's higher there. We talked about Duck Island, and I'd also suggest that you look into what was brought up, Attorney Weicher said about the, your back building with the chimney and if that's an option. I, I don't know, you know, I don't recall exactly what that looks like, so I don't know if that's high enough or that's even something that's worth considering, but, you know, we can at least cross it off the list if you've looked into it. And, and I assume you'll keep working with Mr. Maxon?
Yes.
And we'll get more information because his report was very helpful. It kind of streamlines it for us because it is heavily technical, what we're talking about here.
Actually, just, it might help David. David didn't ask, but it's the signal strength's neg 80 that Clearwire runs the map.
Is, is what, sir?
It's neg 80.
Okay.
So it would, David didn't ask us what it was, but that's what it is.
And there was another point that Attorney Weicher brought up that I was thinking about. When you say there's not substantial coverage, isn't it true that if, if you have coverage but it's not substantial, these minor gaps may be sporadic and spread out, but you still basically can accomplish what you want to do, but you don't have complete coverage, but it doesn't really affect what you're really doing? Everybody has access to it because somebody else will pick up from somebody else's coverage? I mean, that's what I've been able to.
Really, there's no definition for what constitutes a significant gap. That's all determined by case law. That case law is in a process of changing because the wireless communication industry changes. The trend in the country is more and more people are cutting their landlines and going strictly with a cellphone. As such, what constitutes a significant gap is also something that undergoes change too. Where before someone may have said, you know, there may be in a case that says a residential cul-de-sac is not a significant gap in coverage, then maybe something that in today's day and age is different. Because in today's day and age, the carriers are trying to provide 100% coverage because the marketplace and the consumers, that's what's being reflected. They want to move away from landline technology and just use their cellphones and similar type features, so.
But you, but just basically in layperson's terms, if, what you're trying to accomplish here, just so everybody knows, you put, you put this, this device inside, housed inside a steeple or wherever you put it, and what does it actually do? So it helps me use my cellphone? It helps me use my wireless computer? Or all of that?
It could nothing do with wireless.
It's wireless.
Wireless internet is a high-speed wireless.
All right, so now we're just talking about the internet, whether it's your wireless computer?
Yeah, you can use computers and other devices that use Wi-Fi.
So I guess my question is, because I'm having a hard time getting my arms around exactly, you know, what it is a significant gap, if I'm on Star Ave, which is right near there, and that's part of the area you consider a gap, and, but every house on Star Ave can use all their computers and everything, just like everybody on every other street that has it, can you still consider that a significant gap? Or is there really no gap at all because they can access the wireless internet and get everything?
But this significant gap is just for our services. I mean, there may be coverage from other carriers and all, but.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So if, is a household going to be deprived of being able to use their computers or phones or whatever like any other household?
If I understand your question, it's, the Telecommunications Act, the purpose of it was to encourage competition. And in the First Circuit, which Massachusetts is part of, it's very clear that they didn't adopt the notion that if one carrier is providing all services, that's the end of the analysis. They have, their interpretation of the Telecommunications Act is that it is individually tied to each carrier. So if T-Mobile comes in, you're looking at T-Mobile's coverage. If Clearwire comes in, you're looking at Clearwire. So just because Verizon has 100% coverage in a particular city, that doesn't preclude any other carrier from coming in and enjoying the protections of the Telecommunications Act and trying to build out a network. And that particular interpretation has been adopted by the FCC as part of the declaratory ruling that was mentioned in Mr. Maxon's report.
Okay, so for all intensive purposes, is nobody, nobody's going to feel any effect of this one way or the other?
No, they may. I mean, this is a different technology. This is not something that all of the carriers have a WiMAX offering, but it is an option that you're giving to consumers so that if they are unhappy with a particular carrier or a company, cable company that's providing their service right now, they would have an alternative. There might be better service, better pricing, something that gives them an alternative to what they have right now.
All right, so the significant gap in coverage doesn't mean somebody's going to go without coverage, it's just your gap in coverage.
It's tied to Clearwire's significant gap in coverage. That's the analysis.
That helps me because I was confused. Okay, any other, Bill?
Okay, so we're saying we have two potential sites, but what about the other alternative around the telephone poles or the canisters? Is that going to be considered or not by?
I think that's what we talked about. You, you were going to, we were going to get some reports on what that would do, right?
So we're talking three now?
That's a different technology.
Oh, I understand that, but we're talking three, three different types of potential changes.
Yep.
There isn't going to be a fourth? Okay. Well, as each meeting's gone by, I've expected to hear that we're down to the final choices, and it seems like we go meeting to meeting, so that's why I'm asking what's left.
Right, I agree. It has, it has been, you know, this is, again, you know, another continuance, but, you know, I think it's important that we have all the facts before we make a decision one way or the other, you know, and we're building the record of this case, whether it's supported or it's denied. And I think it's just a due diligence that's taken a long time for everybody to do, and it's not unusual because we are at every meeting requesting they do more things. This is the first meeting that we've had Mr. Maxon's report, and that generated a lot of questions for me. You know, we didn't, we didn't get that till recently, so that makes it, you know, if we had time to. we had time to ask questions of the petitioner, when we got that, that's one thing, but the process is a public hearing, so we have to do it here, and then we ask the questions, and then we get the answers. So everybody hears the questions and hears the answers, and that's how the process works. So, again, I think I said this last time, but any of the reports that are submitted to the City Kim are available for any resident that wants to see it before the meeting, because they are in a little bit disadvantage here to come here, and we get reports up here, and I, I can't expect them to bring, you know, 80 copies, but we get reports up here, and we're reading them, and a lot of times, they don't even know what we're talking about. So, anybody who really has a real interest in knowing what's going on, anytime Friday before the meeting can go to the Inspection Services Office and have an opportunity to review exactly what we're going to be reviewing tonight, you'll probably see it before we do. So that's a suggestion for anybody who wants to have any questions or feedback. Go ahead, Jack.
I guess the question I would have to counsel for the petitioner, and I, we referenced, and again, I apologize for my ignorance, when you say gap in coverage, and now we're talking about basically a, a different usage, I, I think is, which, because it's not cellphone, correct? So the, the standard that is set by the FCC in gap or loss in coverage, is it applicable to all the technologies, all governed by the FCC? In other words, if it's...
It's not just voice.
Pardon me?
It's not just a voice, it's not just the voice part of your cellphone.
So the standard, or the terminology, is applicable to all the technology governed by the FCC?
Within the specific section of the Telecommunications Act that's applicable to this application, yes. So like the data transfer, streaming, o- other aspects that your cellphone does are within the same sections of the Telecommunications Act.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just to add to the, also questions that we will be deferring to the city solicitor's office are the legal questions that both parties presented tonight. So, we'll expect to have a representative from the law department here at the meeting two weeks from now, if that's the agreed-upon date, and we'll be able to respond to those questions, because it's really not fair to either one of you guys to be arguing, I mean, we're not a court of law, so we can get a, an opinion from the law department right here. And they'll have those questions in advance, so. And so I suggest, any questions that came up, that either one of you can contact the city solicitor's office and present those questions in case we miss any.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, but if I may, may I ask that for the next meeting, that we also have plots that show not just the green, but the fall-off areas, and that with respect to the actual tower that's proposed at the facility, that it be plotted not only at 55, but as well as at 45 and 35 feet in height, respective, and somewhat more in line with prior existing structures.
Right, that's a fair request. You guys, do you understand that? So, at the next meeting, what they'd be looking for is the fade-out coverage, and do they come in, is that the colors that come in, actually red and...
Just to clarify, it's, the suggestion is that there's multiple signal strengths?
Right.
That's why you'd have different colors? Are you just talking about eighty, green is existing, yellow is proposed?
I guess, well, if we're talking about our existing coverage areas for what are currently plotted, showing where our gap exists, the proposed gap, showing what the plot would be at 55 feet, at 45 feet, at 35 feet...
You want that a different color, that's all.
Okay, for each of those, putting that in a separate color, but also showing what the attenuation of the signal would be with respect to whether or not you have eighty, negative 84 decibels, or whether we're at negative 76, or whether we're at negative 92. That would actually be the plot, that would show the, the signal fall-off at range from different heights.
The plot would be at neg eighty, because that's the signal strength that the carrier is building out their network at. So that's what, I mean, we can do two different colors, but that's the, that's the signal strength that'll be...
Is neg eighty the FCC license strength, or is that just the desired strength?
We need Mr. Maxon, because I'm completely lost now.
Well, let me tell you, I'm entertained hearing two lawyers arguing engineering matters. And I, I do occasionally speak about legal issues, but I do try to disclaim that I'm not a lawyer. You, you wouldn't know that, to hear the lawyers talking that they're not engineers. Yeah, fundamentally, we need to, we need to define what we're looking for, and then we can decide technically how to achieve that. In some cases, yes, a colored plot might be used to show overlapping of different coverages from different heights. Generally, though, what we're trying to do is we're trying to show what the proposed facility provides in contrast with what the existing coverage is, or the projected coverage from other facilities that are, are anticipated. So I would recommend, it's always helpful to have the coverage just from the proposed facility, whatever that is, height A, height B, height C, location 1, location 2, location 3. So, as was shown tonight, the coverage from Duck Island from a certain height, and we can do that from other heights. The applicant then compared the proposed coverage from Duck Island and the proposed coverage from the proposed facility, and said, "Look how much bigger the coverage is from the proposed facility than from Duck Island." But if you overlap that with the coverage from the other facilities, you'll find out that an awful lot of the coverage from the proposed facility goes over towards the bridge, where there's already coverage from another facility. So you then have to look at it in terms of, what's the new coverage from facility A, and what's the new coverage from facility B? So what I would suggest is, if it's possible with your software, to lay out the anticipated, what we'll call the existing coverage, even though the facilities aren't built yet, the existing coverage in one color, green. And then what you can do is you can lay colors on top of each other. So what you do is you'd put underneath the green, the coverage that you're projecting from Duck Island, the coverage that you're projecting from the proposed facility in the steeple, and whatever other locations we're talking about. And that way, with that in a different color, you can say, "Oh, this is the new coverage that Duck Island provides, how does that compare with the new coverage that the proposed facility provides?" And I think we'll find that there's less of a distinction. In fact, what we will find is there a short section of Wentworth Avenue, as I anticipated, that will not have coverage from Duck Island at 100 feet, that will have coverage from the proposed facility, but it's a short section, it's a couple of blocks at the most, and that's where you're going to get locations that, those are the slight differences between alternatives, and a slight difference that's small might not be considered significant. And so by having these plots done in this fashion, we can look at what the new coverage is from any one of these alternatives in conjunction with the existing coverage, and then identify whether an alternative is leaving a significant gap, or something that's minor, or something that's solvable with another facility.
Right, so I think that would be very helpful to the board. Now, would you anticipate that this would take longer than the next meeting, which is two weeks from tonight? Is it, Kim, two weeks from tonight?
Well, it's just a...
I'll change, Mr. Chairman.
A month would be easier to give you.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's, it's just a, just, just software, just a couple hours of work on the part of a very busy RF engineers who are doing dozens of these sites all at once. An applicant has suggested a month, so that they'd have time to get it out in a couple of weeks, and then I'd have a week to look at it and be able to get something out in advance of the meeting.
Right, that's what I'm concerned, your report back to us, does that give you, so a month would be better?
Yes.
Then that takes us to March the 22nd.
It's Jim.
And for the neighbors, if that is the exact date, you will not be notified by mail.
We're going to get, we're going to get the report prior to our meeting.
Right, and that's, so if it's a month out, Mr. Maxon, would you anticipate this board member, this, this board, these board members can get a copy of your report, say, three or four days before the meeting?
Yes, I've been, I apologize for the, the amount of time it took to get this one out. I've been in the middle of my busy season, which is, a number of towns are revising their bylaws, and they have to get them out on the warrants for town meetings, so we've been pushing deadlines like crazy. That'll be much more relaxed in the months of March, so that'll be fine.
And again, if you, if the reports of these Inspection Services, any resident or neighbor can get on and take a look at it, too?
Mr. Chairman, through you, another question for Mr. Maxon. This was raised by the Attorney Wyker. The neg eighty decibel design constraint that you're looking at, if I interpret his question correctly, signal strength drops off as you get away from the, the site that you're looking at. The question that I have to Mr. Maxon is, does that impact, is that an immediate drop or disconnect of the signal, or is there some deterioration, so that it's a bit of a fuzzy area that we're really talking about?
Right.
Outside of the green zone that we're...
Mr. Wyker has, has a fair point, and just as full disclosure, I have worked with Mr. Wyker in another town in this area, dealing with a lawsuit against the town from a wireless company. But he, so what he knows about coverage, he knows from me. But I can see it's not enough yet, sir. Anyway, so, what, what we're looking at is the fact that the applicant has a threshold, and they have arrived at that threshold by some means, and just because you're in the white space, doesn't mean you have no service, which is why for a short hop, like the block or two that Wentworth Avenue would not be served, we can anticipate that it's not a big gap, and in fact, there's still may be some degree of service, just not meeting the applicant's thresholds. I find it gets really complicated when you start looking at whether there's a, you know, you put a second color in with, with an additional margin and that sort of thing. I think if we get to a point where the applicant's saying, "That gap's too big, don't make us use Duck Island," then we ask the question, "Well, how deep is that gap? Does the signal drop by three or six decibels, or is it, or does it drop by 10 or 15 decibels? Is it, is it, in signal strength terms, is it significant, or is it a minor dip?" But I like to do that only when we're arguing over the difference between A and B, because otherwise, it's TMI on the map, it's too much information.
Thank you. And one other suggestion, Mr. Chairman, if I may, since we had referred this current site, proposed site, to the historic board, we may want to consider referring Duck Island and Colley Stadium to the historic board as well for assessment.
Right, I mean, if that's, I, I think, is it better to first determine if those, if either of those sites are available, rather than send it to, I mean, they, they really have no standing to go before the historic board, if they have no legal right to even present it, right? Wouldn't that be, I'm not sure, I, I, I'm not sure if they could. But you can look into that, if, you know, maybe that will save, save us a step, because both of those, I mean, I don't know how historic, either of those are, Colley Stadium, much more, I would guess, than, than Duck Island, but you can definitely, you know, look into that, so that might save an extra trip somewhere, if, if you find out that, you know, somebody's interested in either one of those sites. Any other questions, anybody? Concerns?
So, it's a date, March 22nd, good for all parties, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I just have a question. My name's Barry Booms. Historic Board, it was referred to the Historic Board, I was wondering, what was their, what was their input? I mean, I went to the meeting, so I kind of got an idea, but I don't know if the rest of the residents, if there's just a quick summary, I know there was talk about moving equipment, but I have to just tell the residents.
You know what, sir, I'll let you, I'll let you read this, and you can give it back to me. This is their full report, they support it, but offer suggestions as to conditions, and you can, you know, address that at the next meeting if you'd like, but I do need that back before you leave. Okay. All right, so I guess the, the thought is to, you know, address the issues we just discussed. A report will be presented to Mr. Maxon, he's going to then do his peer review of what they've discovered, and get it back, get a report to this board. In the meantime, I'm going to present questions to the law department, and the applicant may as well. We're going to get input back from the law department, and hopefully have a representative from the law department here at the next meeting to address the legal issues that came up. And I anticipate the next meeting will be the last one, hopefully.
And that would be March the 22nd for all the abutists and the parishioners, you will not be notified by mail.
Well, we have to take a vote, so I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to continue till March the 22nd, 2010.
Seconded.
Okay, Kim, roll call, please.
Continue to March 22nd.
Continue.
Continue to March 22nd?
Continue to March 22nd.
Continue. Okay, this matter's been unanimously continued to March 22nd, there'll be no further public notice. Anybody wishing to address the board, either for or against this petition, is welcome to come that night. Thank you for your patience, thank you for coming.
And can we get a representative from Clearwire to sign the extension, please?
Actually, can you just, this is some, someone left that, or read that, I don't know if they have that on the watch.
Just reporter from a lull sign, can I make sure I know how to spell you guys' names?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And, you'll be here, it probably won't be me here next time, I'm just kind of, I'm the crime reporter, but our correspondent couldn't make it, it'll probably be like...
Okay, the next petition is ZB 2009 00060. This is for variance, the applicant is Rodney Fisher, 15, 19, 15, 27, Middlesex Street, and this is for a suburban mixed use to reduce the number of required parking spaces for martial arts school in accordance with 6.2 of the zoning ordinance. And I have to recuse myself, because I have a conflict of interest with this petition, so I'll turn it over to the Vice Chairman, Vesun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could I have representative for the next petitions? Mr. Fisher and company, come to the podium, please.
Sir, good evening.
Good evening. My name is George Sealeites Jr., 133 Market Street, Lowell, and I'm here this evening with Rodney Fisher, whom I think you've all met previously, and my client, Masteran, who is to my right here, who has been the missing member. Not close enough? Oh, yeah.
Mr. Goldman, do you mind closing the door, please? Thank you.
Who's been the missing member from a couple of the meetings that I think you needed some, the answers to some questions, too. I'm going to try to be, on the one hand, brief, but on the other hand, tell you that there are some very confusing aspects of this thing that took me the longest time to work my way through. One of the things I did, of course, was to review the video of the two meetings previous to this, so that I could get a better idea that was going on. I'm not new to this project. I represented Masteran with the planning board with his site plan review that was approved by them at that time, which more or less laid out the whole situation, including the parking at that time. So it wasn't until after the last couple of meetings that I was approached again to maybe try and help to straighten out the situation. Rodney tried very hard to do it, and I just want to say, I told him this, Rodney and I have an agreement. I won't build buildings, and he won't practice law from this point on. So, so I think we made some headway there. Now, I, if you all have the little white book, and I apologize for, for the late submission, I have to tell you, it's, it's literally hot off the press, because as I was going through this entire process, trying to figure out how to get to the bottom of it, I had to shift, because I realized that there is a special section, which I will refer to in a couple of minutes, that I, that changes the picture here. But let me see if I can't, I, I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to, I'm going to sort of skip over the first part, which is the submission that I normally go by to tell you what I think the case is all about, and what needs to be done, and whatever, and get into the second section with, with the folder that starts parking space requirement under, under initial approval. The reason I'm doing that is because I finally figured out what the problem here was. After all the approvals were granted, and when I say the approvals that were granted, Masteran put in his plan to retain his original 10,000 square foot building on Middlesex Street, and to add this strip mall adjacent to it of about, I think it's 9860 square feet or, something close to that. That was all approved. The parking was looked at and approved by the planning board. There were, the only major condition relative to parking from the planning board related to something that I know was brought up to this, by, by this board in the last couple of meetings, which is snow removal. There's already a planning board condition that says that if necessary, because any spaces are lost, snow will be removed. So, the problem faced that, that came up here was as follows. When you make a plan like this, you have no idea how, who, who is going to operate and occupy these stores. So it's all based on a, a general... So it's all based on a general idea of retail and a general idea of the recreational aspect of how he's using it. And then the matrix plan is put together, the shared parking plan, which you will find, oh, it's probably the third or fourth page in, it's the third page in, that blue section, is submitted to provide the necessary parking. And that was done at that time. Here now is, so under that particular matrix plan and under the original application, and that's what I speak of in my first paragraph here, and I'll try to summarize that, the bottom line is, Masteron was required to have 63 spaces available. And in fact, he had more than enough at that time. I said "at that time" because he lost one space to a dumpster, to a dumpster. So he then went ahead on the project. Everything was going fine, and at some point along the way, a restaurateur came to Masteron and said they wanted to put a Thai restaurant in there. You heard some of this. And when Rodney went to the planning board, excuse me, the building department, he did, they did what they're supposed to do. They said, "You are trying to put a restaurant in 1,200 roughly square feet of space, and under our zoning requirements, 6.1.5, you are required to have 24 parking spaces for that restaurant." Now, I think some of you have heard me rant about this before. The last time I did was with reference to the Burger King operation. I'm not sure where anyone came up with that figure, one seat for every, excuse me, one parking space for every 50 square feet. I don't think there's a restaurant in the city that could make that, meet that requirement. Fortunately, as I finally started to put this together, I realized that in section, and I have it appended at the last page of that particular section, in section 6.1.5.5, and it's right under the schedule there, it says, "Parking requirements for restaurants and takeout restaurants may be reduced to one space per 500 square feet in the UMU, TMU, NB, and INT zones, and one space per 250 feet in all other permitted zones." We're in an all other permitted zone, which is an RR zone, by special permit issued by the ZBA, "If the applicant can prove that onsite parking will sufficiently serve the size of the facility." So now, the question is, can we, and if that were the case for 1,200 square feet, instead of needing 25, 24 spaces, we only need five spaces, because it's all part of the shared parking. That is, of course, if the board finds that there's enough parking in general there. After the initial approval, Masteron, part of, if you look at the matrix plan, the one on the top, the first one, he needed 63 spaces, because he had 2,500 square feet of retail space in his original 10,000-square-foot building. He stopped usage of the retail in that building. So when you go to the chart and look at the new chart down below, it takes into consideration the fact that he no longer is using that 2,500 square feet for retail, and furthermore, the determination was made that of the total of his operation for the recreational use, he's only using 4,500 square feet. So that if you look at the new matrix prepared by Jack Sullivan, as the board requested to have that information, you'll see that under the new matrix, I believe the number's 43, if I'm not mistaken, but let me just take a, 43 spaces is what he needs to do the whole project. So, but the problem, of course, is that we still have these empty stores, et cetera. I was prepared initially, not taking into consideration this business about the restaurant and cutting down on the number of spaces required, to just get to the point that with, by reducing the retail, which he's already done, and by reducing the usage of his own main building, he's brought the number of parking spaces down substantially. Does he still run his school and have people come in and go out? Yes, he does. Are there probably, at any given time, cars coming in, dropping children off? I don't have to repeat this, because you all heard this in the last couple of meetings. Yes, they are. Are most of the people drop-offs? Certainly, they are, because, as far as the kids are concerned. There are rarely more than 20 or 25 cars in that parking lot being used for Masteron's premises, for his recreational use. In addition to that, and I heard very well what Mr. Bailey said in the second meeting, the question, the logical question is, why don't we pick one spot here and say, "All of these spaces have to be, all the recreational spaces for Masteron's section must be up against the far right-hand side of the property, away from everybody, away from the stores," and then that'll make it a lot clearer and a lot easier. In addition to that, Masteron says, has indicated to me, and I have no reason to believe otherwise, certainly based on the information that I've gotten, is there a maybe, maybe, a half-a-dozen times a year where he has a change-of-belt ceremony or something like that, where there's a higher number of cars coming in on one particular occasion? If that's the case, I had him look into this. I had him go out. He saw the neighbor across the street, car, car, whatever it is, and also the Dunkin' Donuts people, who previously have been very helpful to him and told him they can use spaces there, and they agreed that they would also allow those spaces for him. So we believe that there's plenty of space on site. We believe that we shouldn't need 24 spaces for a restaurant under any circumstances. First of all, although Rodney got a little confused about the number of tables and the number of people who are going to be there, this place is principally going to be a takeout restaurant. I don't know if we qualify 100%, but under 6.1.5.5, I think we qualify for only five spaces. So no one knows for sure that what the other two spaces are going, that hopefully, and by the way, this man deserves a lot of credit. He invested his life savings and everything else that went with it. He's gotten all kinds of awards from this city for the work that he's done, both in the community and otherwise. His building is assessed at more than $1 million, and he's paying taxes over $30,000 on this place with three empty stores. Needless to say, he's choking. We need to help him to get that done and over with. So what I'm asking you here tonight is to say, yes, a restaurant, if at 1,200 square feet, can go in with five parking spaces, and make the determination that there are otherwise enough spaces, and add a condition, last page, I've put in some potential conditions, some suggested conditions, add a condition that meets what Mr. Belanger spoke to about what happens if there aren't enough spaces. Well, he's going to have to either meet them or come back here and ask for more spaces to get it straightened out. To add a suggestion that goes along with what Mr. Bailey said about parking on the back right-hand corner, and I'm trying to think, I forget what my third suggested one was. Oh, as I said, whenever the school function is anticipated to bring in possibly more than 35 spaces, he'll be required to have and provide off-site parking within 1,500 yards. That's what our current code requires for off-site parking now. He'll be required to make sure that he furnishes that failing, which code enforcement officers will come in and shut him down if necessary, if he doesn't meet that. So that's my story, gentlemen. I'm asking you now. I'll be more than glad. I know you wanted Masteron here. He can answer questions. I'm not sure, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to say, based on what Rodney told you, and I have no reason to disbelieve that information that he got from Masteron, about how many employees there are in one place and how many employees there are in another place. Keep this in mind. If we put five, if we set aside five parking spaces for the restaurant, and I think it's 22 spaces under the new matrix, if I'm not mistaken, for his building, that's, and two for each of the other retail spaces, that's seven times two is 14, plus five is 19, plus 22, 41 spaces. I mean, there really is plenty of parking available there. I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Bailey, any questions, sir?
Okay. So we got 62, Mr. Lightes. Going to put five with the restaurant. What was the 22?
The 22 is what comes, what the formula comes out to on the, on the, his present place with the reduced usage.
Which leaves you with 35, which will be used primarily for the strip mall.
Yeah, if he ever needs 35. I'm just saying, that should be like a trigger point, that he has to make sure that he's got other people somewhere else.
So nothing, nothing will be marked off for the different businesses, correct?
Back right hand for his business, and the rest will be available for everybody else.
Okay, so that back row has 17 spaces. I was out there, sad. And one thing I did notice, you mentioned about snow removal. Well, the very last spot on that right-hand side is three-quarters covered with snow.
I don't, I don't doubt that.
So if there's supposed to be snow removal there, then I think it would be advantageous for Mr. On to have that taken care of.
No question, but realistically speaking, with three empty stores and what's going on there.
Oh, sure. Yeah, it was just, it was an observation.
He absolutely knows, it's in, as I said, it's a condition in the planning board.
How many handicap, I noticed, I think, either two or three handicap spots. Do you know offhand how many handicap spots?
There was only two that they required us to put in.
So we don't need any handicap at all? Are those primarily for the strip mall, those handicap? So nothing is required for Masteron's?
The original building, no.
Yeah, okay. Now, that's, that's all I have. I, you know, at our last meeting, I was trying to get a good understanding of total spots and what was, I don't want to call it relief, but what was the petitioner really asking for, and based on what you've presented tonight, I'm more than satisfied. I just, I needed a clearer understanding. This is very helpful, providing the book, to give us a.
Sorry it took so long to get here.
No, 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 that's fine.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Nart?
I agree with Mr. Bailey. The book adds some clarity. Either one of the gentlemen, Masteron, are you currently in negotiation with any potential tenants for those three locations?
For?
For the empty space?
Oh, yes, one restaurant now. That's what, that's what precipitated.
Right, but I meant beyond that.
No, I don't think so. Nobody for the, nobody for the other two, if you have somebody, Mr. Nart, we'd be glad to talk to them, but right now, the poor guy doesn't have anybody that's ready to go in there.
I guess the only question I would have, but how would, how would those two potential tenants affect the overall number? That would be the.
They would go by the formula, assuming that they were just regular retail businesses, of one space for every 500 square feet of usable space. No, I'm sorry. They wouldn't. Strike that. I apologize. They would go by the formula in the matrix, because it's the shared usage part. In other words, they, and don't, please don't ask me how that's arrived at, because in all the years I've practiced, I just fill out the numbers and say, "Okay, it's 20% of this and 40% of that, and I understand that." I still don't understand exactly who came up with that formula and how.
One of the things, the only other clarity I would look for, what was, what is going to be the actual seating capacity of the?
I, I don't know. I think it's, I've been told, and I just, second-hand hearsay, I've been told it's going to be primarily takeout, and that there may be a table or two with three or four chairs around them, and there'll be no encouragement for people to really stay in there. I think, as you know, I mean, even at Burger King today, nobody sits in there in the places anymore. This is not a fancy restaurant that's being planned here. This is more in the nature of a takeout kind of a restaurant.
My members are incorrect. There were only two or three, it was a husband and wife or.
Correct.
Running the business.
Yes, correct.
But no other additional employees, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nart. It's much clearer tonight, because the last time Mr. Fisher was here, he indicated that the restaurant was going to be 10 tables, four chairs per table, and a lot of us raised eyebrow. So tonight is much clearer, so let me turn to Mr. Belanger.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and I'm in agreement with you. Mr. Lightes has brought some clarity to the situation. Thank you very much. But a few questions here. I mean, so, I mean, realistically, you're not lessening any activity in the martial arts studio. You're looking for a variance to reduce the required number of spaces. And I mean, I'm in the neighborhood. I've kept a watchful eye on this, because literally, this thing overflows, it's going to be in my backyard, technically. But, you know, we're looking to help you. You've got three vacancies there, we're there to help you, and Masteron has done a lot, Mr. Lightes. So what are your intentions? Now, you have three vacancies in the strip mall, correct?
One is for the restaurant. The other two, as we've indicated, unfortunately, Mr. Belanger, we have no leads for yet. It'll probably, hopefully, be something of a similar nature to the, obviously, isn't going to be a hair salon or a nail salon, because there's one in there. It won't be a print shop, but it's that kind of a service operation with very few employees. And by the way, that, those kinds of, those kinds of operations lend themselves to, I know, I use that printing place, someone from my office goes up and drops off the material and picks it up. It's like a two-minute proposition with that kind of a place.
Okay, I understand, but then, so now we're down to two vacancies with this restaurant?
Two vacancies.
Okay, well.
And I'm saying that the department, I'm sure that Mr. Saint-Hilaire could tell you how this is done. What the department does is, they look at the matrix chart as well, and they say, if they believe that it's going to go over the number of spaces available, just as they did in this case, because they needed 24 spaces, they say, "Uh-uh, no, no, you better go back to the zoning board."
Okay. Okay, well, point being, I'd like a little control over decision-making, what's going to go in these two units, okay? Because we're going to be cutting it close here. Okay, so that's, I mean, I'm only one vote, but I would like to see you come back to this board when you do get prospective tenants in there. I mean, we're looking to help you, but we cannot have any huge, at this point, and I think you realize that yourselves.
I was hoping you weren't going to say that, because I heard you say that previously, and let me tell you my concerns. First of all, there's a, that means a new petition back to the board. It means a new sending out of notices to everybody. It means a new public hearing for each one of those occasions, and it means probably hiring a lawyer again to make sure that everything is clearly stated. That's burden number one to be placed on Masteron at this point. Number two, does this board really want to get into the issue of whether or not the next place in is going to be a, you know, I don't know.
Well, it's the nature of the business that concerns me, counsel, that could draw a lot of heavy traffic and flow, so, you know, I'm looking to help Mr. Fisher and Masteron, absolutely. I know what you're saying, it's not a cost-effective way to go about it, but we have the building commissioner on hand, Mr. Saint-Hilaire, maybe he can shed a little light here, if they can maybe have some input.
How about this for a suggestion? If you put, I think this works, if you put in your decision that he comes back and for a review based of the next two stores, rather than making it be a new public hearing all over again, that might help matters in terms of the operational part. He isn't afraid to come back, and he isn't afraid to tell you what it is or who it is, it's just the idea or the headache that costs the expense. You go to a tenant, the tenant says they want to come in, and then you say, "Well, yeah, you know, but we have to go to the zoning board to make sure," and that's six weeks away, or eight weeks away, maybe, or something like that. So is that suggestion something you think?
That could be an option, sure.
Because we could also.
But I also have another concern. I mean, I think under normal conditions, counsel, you know, things are going to be all right there. But Masteron does have tournaments on occasion, say, half a dozen a year, where it's no longer a pickup-drop-off type thing. The parents want to see their child perform, and that's understandable. So these are certain circumstances where I think your conditions will help subside, where, you know, you need to find alternative parking off-site, because your tournaments, I imagine, on Saturdays, you know, where things can flow out to the street, local businesses and whatnot.
I didn't want to say this, because I didn't want to get into muddying the water, but I will now. I can in fact say that Masteron is in the process of negotiating within the. within the region for some land that will give him an additional twenty spaces. So, I think if that ever happens, then I, I think the, I think the, the problem will be totally solved, but, but I know we're here now, and we need to get that tenant in there, so we need a decision.
I'm trying to expedite that myself, but, you know, again, we could have a potential perfect storm brewing here with, you know, 'cause I'm there, it's, it's near three-quarters to eighty percent, you know, a lot of the time, that I've seen, I'm, like, again, I'm nearby, so I just want to be careful in these next two tenants, if at all, and help Master Ahn at the same time. But those are my concerns, I'd like to hear the input from the other board members, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
I think in the council recommendations, there's also a recommendations that arrangement be made if there's any tournaments or any color bell changing or graduations, and arrangement be made with the next-door property owners for parking, and that, we can make that a condition as well, and so...
Yes, excellent compromise, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you.
Mr. Carbonar, sir?
I appreciate the clarification on the restaurant, I think that helps us understand a little bit the use there. I like the idea of having some overflow parking and agreements with adjacent property owners, I think that, that's helpful as well. The idea perhaps of an administrative review, which we've done in other situations like this, on a six-month or annual basis, would, could be a way to, to keep in touch on this as well, to see how things develop and...
We would be available for that.
Yeah, we could be, I think we could do that after the opening of the Thai restaurants or that restaurant, six months or maybe a year from there, you know, for a, a review by this board.
Maybe six months of being fully occupied, was that something along those lines?
That, that sounds fine, too. Mr. Ban, are you, sir?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little confused. Do we need a variance, or are we looking for a special permit?
The application is for a variance.
So, well, you said special permit, you had mentioned special permit.
Well, that's what six-point, one-point, five-point-five says. I think the, I think the issue is that because the, because at this point, if we can assume all the other factors in the matrix to be correct, then I think an argument can be made that even if it were passed with twenty-four, that it would be okay, that we would still be under the sixty-three spaces. I didn't want to get into that, Mr. Bienvenu, I was hoping that because this is so complicated, I, I knew that you, being a specialist in the field, would probably understand that aspect of it a little better, but I figured that if we could just get by the issue of how many spaces were needed under the new matrix, because he's no longer using the retail space and the additional space in his quarters, that, that would hopefully solve that problem.
So, would you like to change for a special permit on the floor, or, I mean, a variance, obviously, you know, the criteria...
I'd, I'd love to include that in your final decision, if it's appropriate.
It makes easier for the board to look at a special permit, obviously, instead of a variance, because variance has a much higher standard.
I, I think that's a good idea. I, I wasn't again gonna muddy, muddy the water, but since you brought it up, and I hope everyone understands what, what Mr. Bienvenu just said, what, what actually is, is it requires a finding for you to grant a special permit, is sort of variance kind of situation. Have I said that correctly?
But it also puts us back to the, do you have to go back to the planning board with your, your new calculations to go back to the planning board to come back with a favorable recommendation for a special permit, which we don't have a problem, it's much easier to get than obviously a variance. So, that, those are the things I'm looking for, and if we could do that, then it makes it a lot...
Absolutely, as long as, I think we can do this as part of the, the regulatory or the in-house, as opposed to a new filing and a new, new hall hearing and all of that stuff. So, yes, I'd welcome that, if we could make that as a, as a part of it.
Okay, that, that's what I think we're looking for, is that makes it easier for us with the special permit, we can put some conditions on it, it's not a variance, so we don't have to deal with soil conditions, so on and so forth, as you know.
Correct.
The other things I have is, obviously, I, I, I'd like to see at least lease agreements with Dunkin' Donuts and Costa, to, to the point of they allow him to park there, and once he acquires, if he acquires that piece of property for twenty more spots, then we could get rid of that in the future. It just gives us a little bit more where they're allowed to park over there, we don't have problems with people parking over there as, as overflow. That, that's just one of my, my suggestions.
I, I hear you, but Master Ahn tells me that the folks across the street are a little leery about getting into legalities and leases and lawyers and all of that stuff.
It's just, you know, obviously, it protects the, you know...
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Can I ask, make a request? And that would be that we do it without a lease, but that if at some point in the future...
Well, yes, it's an agreement that they, they know who's, who's gonna be parking in their lots, that they're gonna allow Master Ahn to have his customers parking their lots, when obviously they're not doing business, so we don't have cars being towed or people...
Correct.
So, we could get something like that, that it says it's, it's allowed, that's all we're looking for, it, it just doesn't cause a problem. We also talked about, is it gonna be more takeout than sit-down, or is it gonna be more sit-down?
That's what I'm told, but, but the fact of the matter is, under six-point, one-point, five-point-five, they don't differentiate with the ability to make it either takeout or regular restaurant. By the way, another editorial comment, God only knows how they get to that as an exception, I don't know where it really helps the situation out that much, but in that case, it does say takeout or regular restaurant. But, and then I'll finish by saying my understanding is, it's going to specialize in takeout as opposed to sit-in.
Okay. And then, obviously, the review, the review's been brought up, which is a good idea, because we do have neighbors around there, and a review of parking problems, or if problems did arise when we start, you know, filling those other two spots. Now, obviously, he, is he gonna look to fill the, his building, whether it was retail before, or is he not gonna look to fill that at all?
Not without coming back here, that's what I stated in, in proposed condition number one. And, and also, he just had me thinking about something else. He's also, I spoke to him about getting across to his people the whole idea of carpooling. You know, if there's kids coming from a same neighborhood and they're all friends and whatever, then put three or four kids in one car, not, not mothers, three or four cars with a mother in them or whatever. I mean, he can't make it mandatory, but he certainly knows that that's what he needs to encourage them to do.
Okay. So, how do we go about doing this, then? If we're gonna, do you go back to the planning board with your, your new plan and then come back to us with a special permit? I mean, I, I want to make it so it, you know...
Well, I guess, could we do it, that you would grant the special permit conditioned on getting a positive recommendation from the planning board? So that, I'm afraid otherwise, we have to start that whole process all over again with notices and public hearings and all of that.
Correct, well, that, that's correct, so it's kinda like you want to withdraw without prejudice and start all over again, because a variance is the toughest part. And, and I'm just looking at it to do it the proper way, instead of, again, muddying the waters, as you've been saying, it gets kinda, because if you go back to the planning board and they want no part of it, they still have a denial.
We've been there too many times.
Well, it sounds like...
With all due respect, and that, that's other issues about other things, landscape...
Yeah, it sounds like you have a good plan here, but, you know...
So, that would be my request, that we do it conditioned on, I mean, I don't want to, I, I'd rather not even have to go back to or for a recommendation on the special permit. I think you have the power to, I think this board has the power to issue it without a recommendation, just as you have the power to, to grant a variance tonight, even though there was a negative recommendation from the planning board, by the way, because no one was there, to tell them what was going on.
Correct, that's why I would like a positive recommendation from the planning board, where they, they've had, they, they basically told the applicant when he started this project that you're gonna have problems from square one about parking, and they, they knew it, and they said it in their, their minutes, saying you have sixty-three spots, and by the way, you're gonna need a variance sooner or later, so, you know...
Well, that's why we hope we can prove ourselves when we come back six months from now, whatever this board decides.
Mr. Ban, can we do it the way Attorney Elias requests, like to get...
I'm not sure procedurally if that's the way we should do it, I, I'm, I'm asking you.
I think you have, I think you have the power to do it.
We can make that a condition, then.
You could if you want, if it works out for us, I mean, that's, that's, basically, he needs a special permit, he's trying to prove to us that's what he needs instead of variance, and I say it's much, much easier to get than a variance.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Mr. Bailey, sir?
Didn't we receive, whoa, didn't we receive in the package, dated December twenty-eighth? This was from the planning board. They came back with a denial when they looked at this again, and this was based on a variance? I think we got, it's the section six-point-two, and I don't know if you're...
That's what I just alluded to.
Okay.
I was...
Okay, I thought you were talking about your other previous...
No, no, I was no part of this thing at that time. They didn't even, you know, there's a, if, if I may say so, again, I'm getting off editorially or whatever, there's a flaw in our system, if, as far as I'm concerned, an applicant for a variance or a special permit is not made aware that they have to go to the planning board first. I, I don't know if you are aware of that, in many cases, they're not made aware of that. And that's why these gentlemen, laymen, without knowing that, never even knew there was a planning board meeting scheduled. And if you're not there, you're not gonna have much luck.
Right, there's a few things that I'd like to see. If it may be a suggestion as part of the recommendations, Mr. Secretary suggested that whatever go in there, next three business, now two businesses that go into this strip mall be approved, is that correct, by the commissioner? Mr. Secretary?
Yeah, I'd like to see him at least go to the building department.
Right, right, and the next request was regarding a bill, a snow removal from the property.
I believe that's already a condition set in place by the planning department.
Yes, but, yes, we should have it as conditions as well, because according to Mr. Bailey, it hasn't been complied with or enforced by us. The next would be that the petitioner obtained letter of support from the next-door property owner in, in arrangement, in the event that there is a, a tournament or graduation or bill, color bell exchange and stuff, letter of stating that we'd be more than happy, whatever, to have Master Ahn and his student park in those property. Is there any other, oh, a six-month review, meaning that after the Thai restaurants starting their business there, that six months from there, that you come to us, report to us as to the progress or the lack of in term of the parking? Is there anything else, Mr.?
Mr. Bailey's suggestion, I think, that we mark spaces to the right rear for use of the martial arts section only, if that's...
That sounds good, and that would address some of the concern Mr. Bailey had brought up in the last meeting. Is there anything else, any board members like to add, so that Mr. Secretary can bring the motions and with those condition?
Well, one, before we do go into the motion, Mr. Vice Chair, now, how does the petitioner feel about, I mean, the Vice Chair just proposed you get a letter from, in a butter stating permission that you have, is your client comfortable with that?
Well, they're gonna try, and, and I, and I understand that if they don't, they...
I think it's better than the lease, you see? He would take this more than he would take the lease, because Mr. Ban would like the lease, and this would certainly address some of the concern Mr. Ban has, and I think a letter would be, you know, in, in the middle of a compromise.
How about Mr. Belangia, if we said a letter from someone within fifteen hundred square feet, if not square feet, fifteen hundred feet of the property? That would give him more room to talk to people in the neighborhood to try to get that worked out. Would that be acceptable to the board?
Acceptable by me.
I would be comfortable with that, yes.
I, I'm only saying that because that, I don't want to foreclose, I know we had a conversation with a gentleman across the street, as I indicated before, who was more than willing to let it happen, but just didn't want to get involved in getting it on paper.
Sounds fine.
Okay, any other input from the other board members?
Go ahead.
Let me hear, there's a, oh, you know what? With all that said, I ignore the audience completely. I know the audience here on different petition, but if they'd like to speak and support, they can come up so that they register as a supporter of this petition.
Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals, my name is Mark, one-fifty-eight Oakland Street, LA, Mass. I'm in favor of this, particularly now that Attorney Leidys has presented, made the presentation tonight. I believe that it has answered a lot of questions that this board has been asking, and I urge that the board vote in favor of this with the conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Is there anyone I'd like to speak and support? Hearing none, that portion of public hearing is closed. Is there anyone here would like to speak in opposition of this petition? In opposition, hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Now, what's the wish of the board, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve with the following conditions. The first three were set by Mr. Leidys, that I will read for the record. Number one, that the original building is used only as a school and for no other purpose, and any change of use must be submitted to the zoning board of appeals for consideration of the number of parking spaces that must be allocated and available for such change of use. Two, that spaces in the plaza for the use of the martial arts studio shall first be those which are located at the right rear of the parking lot against the fence and will be marked accordingly, and the remainder are to be allocated for the use of the stores in the plaza according to the formula set out in the City of Lowell zoning code, and any issues or discrepancies are to be brought before the zoning board of appeals for review. Three, that whenever school functions are anticipated to possibly bring more than thirty-five spaces allocated for parking for the school, the owner will be required to provide off-street parking for excess vehicles within fifteen hundred feet of the property. Four, a six-month pay review, it will be established for six months from the restaurant opening. It'll be six-month review from restaurants opening. Five, snow removal, regarding snow removal, any excess snow be removed from the property not to be a detriment, so, so in the event of no parking spaces are to be lost. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, is there a missing one?
Agreed, Mr. Between Dunkin' Donuts and Costa for parking.
Yes, well, that's, that, I think falls in number three, where we said we'll be, we'll be required to provide off-street parking for excess vehicle other than fifteen hundred feet. I think we're covering that regard, Mr. Bienvenu.
Do I hear a second on that, sir?
Just, just one quick question.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bailey.
We have no, brought up the point about variance versus special permit, did we address that?
Well, it's, I question the legality of changing it on the floor to, it was advertised as a variance, Mr. Bailey, and I question the legality of changing it on the floor to a special permit. I don't think that's wise, but I, that's just my input.
So, what are we voting on?
Voting a variance, yeah. To approve the variance.
What happened to the special permit? Did I misunderstand something?
Yes, it was brought, Mr. Bienvenu proposed we change it on the floor to a special permit, but the application is asking for a variance to reduce required number of parking spaces for martial arts studio.
I guess if I can help the situation at this point now, if you pass it in its current form as a variance, there, and if at some point the number of spaces required for the restaurant push it over what the building department finds is, is acceptable under the parking matrix, then it'll be of us to come back for a special permit. Am I, is that fair, is that, Rick, doesn't that make sense?
Well, we're just talking about the legality of changing it on the floor, Mr. Leidys, and obviously, you'd have to start back from square one if you wanted a special permit. So, at this point, we could grant you a variance with the conditions, and we have a six-month review, which, as long as the board members agree on it, that's, that's how we could pass it, obviously, and then... And then, obviously, when you come back again for any of your other, the two other units there, or the master aunt's school, it would come back as what it should be.
It's my understanding, Mr. Alides, change to a special permit, you'd have to reapply, re-advertise, and I think we're all looking to avoid that.
So we'll pass it.
Let's just vote, just like, let us vote as it is now with those.
Question, if I could, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Counselor, please, or any other counselors, help me. So i- if the application is submitted, this isn't just for this particular petition, but at any time, as a variance, and it's supposed to be something other than that, do we accept it and vote on it as it is submitted? And I guess that would be my question.
I think the answer to that is yes, you can, and you're voting on a variance that says that the matrix that's now with the reduced usage of the other, the, the main building and the original building, is the appropriate parking matrix now. I think if we can get that established, then it's going to help everything in terms of how many spaces are needed. See, there's no longer any retail use in the original building.
I, I'm more, I'm more confused about even not just this petition, but at any other time, when the petition is submitted, who makes the decision as to whether or not it's submitted as a variance or a special permit, I guess would be my question, so that we know what we're voting on.
I, I would answer that as follows. It's generally in the first instance up to the applicant, who then provides it to the Building Department, and I think Mr. Sainte-Lay will confirm that the practice most recently has been that somebody, the, I think it's the zoning officer, isn't it, Mr. Sainte-Lay? The zoning officer, in this case Kathy Murphy, reviews it to see whether or not it's a proper form now. And, and she obviously did, and she, and, and the matter went through as a variance. All of that goes to the issue that I said at the outset, which is, this is such a terribly confusing thing, because you're trying to establish parking spaces when you don't even know what's going to be in there. And so, the major thing that we wanted to establish, at least at the outset, at least this is, I'm told that the, that the Building Department told Rodney that he needed to get a variance, because there weren't enough spaces, and that's how he filed.
Isn't that correct? When you first go to the Building Department, it was, the reason you request as a variance is because you want to cut back the parking space in that martial arts school to a 22 parking spot per se?
Both, both to us, both to cut back the number of parking spaces because of the change of use, and to then, when, once that's established, show that there is room to bring other, other uses into the property. But yes, you're right. Principally, it was to show the change of use of the, of the building, diminish, of his building, original building, to diminish the number of parking spaces required.
Well, since we have the interim Commissioner for the Inspection Office is here, let me hear Mr. Sainte-Lay have any comment on it. Sainte-Lay, would you mind, uh, give us a perspective on this?
He's interrupting. Could you kindly repeat the question?
Well, right now is even more confused than two meetings ago, right now, whether or not Attorney Alia should be requesting as a special permit was now recorded as a variance, and.
It's kinda debatable. Right now, he, he's here before the board for a variance.
Right.
And that's the only thing the board could vote on, is a variance.
Right.
So if you determine he needs a special permit instead of a variance, he's back to square one. I believe he needs a variance from the required amount of parking spots.
Right.
And personally, I think if you limit the amount of seating capacity in that restaurant, it will certainly help the situation.
I agree.
It'll give us something to hang our hat on.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Sainte-Lay.
I, I knew Mr. Sainte-Lay would have the answer for us. That's fine by me, if we say that the, that the restaurant needs, can, needs to have five spaces, and then any other activity after that has to fall in the matrix, into the matrix, which they will look at before, just as they refuse to grant the, the permit under the current situation because of that problem, they'll, the, the next application, they'll sit down and they'll say, how many parking spaces are required, and how many are required for the new place, and then decide there are or there aren't enough. If they say there aren't enough, you know what? He'll be back here for sure.
Okay, well, what, what is proposed seating in the restaurant?
The proposed seating in the restaurant, I, with all due respect, unfortunately, has nothing to do with what the parking requirements are. We are, we figure, and this is just a guest of it, that they're not gonna be able to, they're not going to want to seat more than four, five, or six people in there. But I don't want you to hold me to that, Mr. Belanger, because they may put eight people in there. But the, but what the ordinance says is, if you're putting in a restaurant with 1,200 square feet, you need to provide one parking space for every 250, in this case, if there's a finding, that it's, for every 250 square feet of space. If it's a 1,200 square foot restaurant, five parking spaces.
Right, but under the Commissioner's recommendation, he, he suggests we kind of limit the amount of seating to avoid any potential.
And, and I would say that a good way to do it would be just as 6.1.5.5 does it, which is one parking space for every 250 square foot of, of space in the, in the establishment.
You're right, but again, that's square footage. We're talking people's seating capacity now. What is this intent, do you know?
As, as crazy as it sounds, the code doesn't look to number of people.
Well, we can still make it a condition, on this board, we can still make it a condition that we don't want it to exceed a certain amount of tables and chairs.
Sure, I don't have a problem with that, no more than.
Well, what's a fair number, do you think, to your client?
Why don't we say, why don't we say three tables? We'll compromise between two and four. Why don't we say numbers of people at a table rather than, 'cause there could be a table, you know, where there are two people on one spot on a smaller table.
You're proposing three tables with two persons, or?
Well, why don't we say with no more than eight people seated at tables?
Total.
Total.
Eight at a table?
No, total.
Oh. Okay, Madam Secretary, so we have yet another condition on this, that seating capacity not to exceed eight persons. I think the Commissioner should have some good light on that. That should be very helpful to us.
Is that all? Right, all right. Do I hear a second on it?
Sure is, because they were granted a permit to build this place and occupy it, when, and only required to have 63 spaces. The hardship was created by the city boards that allowed it. I think that alone is enough.
Second.
All right, please call her on. Approve with conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Approve with condition.
Approve with conditions. Approve with conditions.
Approved by five votes. Please come in and sign.
Thank you, gladly.
Child, come.
You did.
Where do you want, where do you want to put that? Over there? Over there.
Okay, the next petition is the first and only order new business tonight, that's ZB 2010 00001, variance request. The applicant is Arthur Feneros, 63 Smith Street, also known as 16 Hoag Terrace. The parcel is located in a traditional multifamily zone, and the petition would like to demolish the existing two-family home, subdivide the lot, and construct a single-family home on each lot with insufficient frontage to exceed the maximum required front yard setback pursuant to Article 5, Section 5.1 of the zoning ordinance. Attorney Flood?
Mr. Chairman, James Flood, 549 Rogers Street, Lowell, representing CNJ Realty Trust, and also with me is Dean Jenkins of Jenkins LLC, who will be the builder. As the notice said, we're in front of you tonight requesting two variances for two lots that we are creating, one for the lot frontage and one for the maximum front yard setback. I'm thinking, if you're familiar with the site, and if you've seen what's up there, this is gonna be a great improvement for the, for the neighborhood. The building that's there is dangerous, dilapidated, and is really a hazard to the neighborhood. So what we propose to do is, is to tear down that building and create two lots and construct two single-family dwellings. It's our feeling that instead of rebuilding a duplex, if we create two single-family homes, the people will have some pride in the neighborhood, since they've got an investment, will keep it up, and won't let, let it fall down like it did before. We appeared in front of the Planning Board last week, last Thursday it was, and we have received approval for a site plan approval, and also a, a neighborhood character special permit for the building of the homes. At the hearing last week, most of the abudders were there, but they were, most of them are elderly, so we said, instead of coming tonight, why don't you send a letter in support, and I'd like to submit these letters.
Sure. So the board has been provided with about 10 or 12 letters of support from various neighbors on, on or around Smith Street who support this project.
Yeah, everybody that was there, and they were abudders, were in support of this. And I think you can see from the shape of the lot, there is a hardship here. There's no way we could meet the setback for the house, because it, it's kind of a, you know, the house, the, the, the major part of the lot is set way back, and I think this is one, one that really calls for requested variances. Dean's here, he can go over those pictures if you'd like, but I think if anybody has been up there and saw it, you can see what we're trying to do.
Hey, Jim, is this, is this propos, is this house basically what it's gonna be? Is that what's gonna be?
Which one is that? Yeah, it's very similar to the one we had at Homestead.
Right, that's, I said, it looks like that one, so.
Yeah. We're just gonna put, you can see from the condition of the planning board, they want some molding around the windows, was the only thing they wanted, but they felt that that was in the character of the neighborhood up there.
Okay, now, that, that differs, Counselor, from a few on the chart there, so is, is that just other ideas for us to look at, or?
No, we, we, we wanted to show the, the, the board, the Planning Board, that our, you know, we were going to build new construction like we did on, we built those four homes right there on Westford Lane Street and Farnold Street, so we wanted to let them know that that was the neighborhood that we built in. But I think fitting on the lot, you know, the way these are gonna fit on the lot, you need something gable-facing, and those aren't, those are straight-faced colonials, so, that are a little longer, so that's why they don't work on that lot. I just wanted to show it.
Thank you.
Dean Jenkins for the record.
That's the, he brought that, and he met with the neighbors before, and that's the board he showed to the neighbors.
So both, both homes will be exactly these?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, can I ask?
Sure, go ahead.
Counsel, I noticed the city also talked about, is it Mount Hoag? Is it Hoag Terrace? Is that?
Yeah.
They don't, they don't treat that as a, an official street?
No, they want us to petition the city council to abandon any rights that the city has in Hoag Terrace.
Okay, so is the plan to put a, I mean, I drove into the site, you're gonna put a brand-new driveway through there?
Yeah, I, I think the plan that you had shows an 18-foot driveway. They requested that we reduce it to 13 feet. The Planning Board.
Okay, 'cause they mentioned about fire apparatus getting in there. There was something about the width also, right?
12 feet would be sufficient for the fire.
So they're all set for turnaround? Was that discussed with?
Yep.
Now, on each side of the, the new driveway, you got some trees on the left as you're approaching in, and on the right, there's like a real beat-up fence. Is that on this property's? You're gonna be replacing the fence on the right?
On the right, there's a wall. There's a wall on the right.
I saw, I saw like a wooden fence.
Oh, is that on Hoag Terrace?
As you're driving down on the right-hand side, there's like a wooden fence that's pretty beat up.
Yeah, when you approach, it's actually on both sides. If you come into that entrance, there's actually on the right-hand side, which is what I think you're talking about.
Yeah.
That wooden beat-up fence right there is, it's hard, without having the surveyor go out and absolutely tell me that it's there or not. What I do know is that, that you go up about 60, 70 feet, once you're inside that site, and then you start to develop a retaining wall that starts along, that kind of is parallel with Westford Street. And, but this, so for the purposes of this, you know, I would love to tell you that that fence is mine, and I'm gonna take it down. You know, the, the, the ones.
Sure.
Actually, I push it down is more like it. It's not in the ground, it's not set in, in any concrete, it's, it's just a, you know, it's just standing there, and I think it's just more like a barricade than anything else. So if it is ours, when we go out and totally survey, then we're probably gonna remove it. If it's not, we, we, if it's on somebody else's property, we're gonna talk to them and see if they want us to take it down and remove it and get rid of it.
Right, but the plan isn't to put any new fencing up?
It is. There actually is, there's a, there's a plan to come further into the property, once you come further into, to the site on the right, once the retaining wall starts, and it's not on top of the retaining wall, because I think that's a mistake sometime, just in off the retaining wall, we're gonna do a four-foot-high vinyl fence, pick it, similar to the one I did on Sagamore Street, which is a variance I requested at this board, that we ended up getting put in, probably something just like that, as a visual buffer for the people who live on Westford Street. And remember, these houses, these new two proposed houses actually sit back now off of that wall, so it allows us to kind of landscape the front of it a little bit.
It's gonna be two separate lots?
Yes.
So as far as plowing that driveway, it's gonna be up to those two owners to decide how they're gonna, it's a common shared driveway?
Common driveway agreements will go up record, and they're both shared 50% each.
And, Mr. Jenkins, on the left-hand side, as you're coming into the property, those, and I know you have it down here on the bottom, are those, you're planning to take those down, or you're just gonna leave them?
Well, you know, here's the problem, like, with the protection. I think we can probably save some of those trees as you come into that site, you know, it helps, but there's, you know, the same issue's gonna happen that happens once you get around the corner, which is now you got these massive split-in-half trees that are overtaking the lot, that have to come down. They border it on the two fences, they slide it to both people's yards. So what we're probably gonna do is some selective tree removal, and we spoke to somebody at the Planning and Development as part of this, they want us to kind of, you know, signify which trees are coming down and so forth, and we put on doing that. But I plan on, on, on taking some of them down, just because I think it makes sense for the future of who, who's ever gonna own it.
And behind both new buildings, are there gonna be fencing behind the facility?
There is. Currently, right now, there is, there is an access easement for the person who lives at 75-1 Smith Street. And that, we are going to reduce the size of that easement from 30 feet to 20 feet, and in doing, you know, in doing so, a part of our agreement with him was, is that we would plant, take down the existing fence that's there, and, you know, concrete blocks and so forth, and install a vinyl six-foot privacy fence with a double gate.
Okay, and parking, is parking on, is it on each side of the home, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, one on each side, is that?
Yeah, stacked, no, double, you know, parking for two stacked. But I think what you're gonna do is you're almost gonna create, quite frankly, you know, turnarounds for both of them. You know, they're just gonna be, you know, you're gonna end up with turnarounds that, that, just as you pull out of your driveway. So I think it's gonna be actually a fairly easy act, in and fairly way.
has done great work in the city in the past. There's gonna be a, a picket fence where the retaining wall is, or you're repairing the, the retaining wall, and then the picket fence is going along that, is that what's gonna happen?
In front of it.
In front of it?
Yeah. We're gonna repair the retaining wall, take down the trees that are presently on the retaining wall, and put a picket fence in front of it.
Probably lower that retaining wall as well, a couple of three blocks, it's up too high, it doesn't need that much, particularly if that house comes down, and the, and the trees around it and so forth that run along it, that comes down, there's no need of that wall being as high, and the neighbors are in agreement. Part of the problem with them is, is that, you know, the wall's oddly high, they have some garages, rear garages, they can't even get back there because of the height of the wall, so if they take it down, they can then do some of the repairs they need to do for, to their own properties.
The wall, the wall is falling into their garages, so, they wanted that down.
Thank you, I agree with Mr. Bailey, I think this is a great project, and I would support it. Thank you.
Yes? Thank you, sir. How high is the retaining wall around?
I thi, I think it's currently about six feet, you know, I would estimate five, you know, five to six feet, and I think it's gonna probably end up four.
Is that what's gonna, you're gonna be doing somewhere, somewhere between four to six feet?
Excuse me?
The retaining wall.
It's, it's existing, Vesna, and he's taking a couple of the strips down, down, probably down to four feet.
So lower it down to four feet, some of those area? Okay.
And he's gonna put the four-foot fence in front of it.
Right, right. And, and the planning board, you have about eight conditions of the planning board that do plans to meet as part of this.
Right.
Okay. Well, you know, Mr. Attorney Flood, and the petitioner, been here before, as before, and, you know, the petitioner, Mr. Jenkins, have done a great job in the past, so I have no problem in this petition, that he will do a great job as well. Thank you.
Okay, Corey?
Yes, see you, Mr. Chairman. I'm in agreement with my colleagues, and I think it's a great plan. I was up there today, that site is a mess, quite frankly, I don't think anybody, I don't like to speak for my fellow board members, but I don't think anybody can be pleased with what the condition, what's, what's there now, so. I did have a few concerns that Mr. Bailey addressed, as well as Mr. Newton, about that retaining wall, was a very big concern of mine, on the Westford Street side of the property. Is that the one that's gonna reduce from six to four?
Right.
Okay, I think that will help matters seriously, so I think you got some, we're gonna have some owner-occupied homes in there, bring some pride to that neighborhood, so I do support the project. Thank you very much.
And Kevin?
No questions.
And Rick?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody here wish to speak in favor of this petition? In favor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board of appeals, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Open Street Lowell Mask, and I spoke in front of the planning board last Thursday on this. It fits the neighborhood character as part of the Lowell master plan, and I've known Dean for many, many years, and he does excellent quality work. I urge the board to approve this with any conditions, including the planning board's conditions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this petition? In favor? In hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anybody here wishing to speak in opposition to this petition? In opposition? In hearing none, that portion of the public hearing is closed, and we'll open it up for a vote. Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Roll call.
Mr. Knox?
Approve.
Mr. Bailey?
Approve.
Mr. Bailey?
Approve.
Mr. Valanga?
Approve.
Mr. Care?
Approve. You've been unanimously approved, sir, I just need to come up and sign this plan. Good luck. In the last portion of the hearing tonight, we have minutes to be accepted from October 26th and November 9th.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the minutes, and I make a motion to approve the minutes from October 26, 2009, and November 9, 2009.
Seconded.
Okay, roll call to approve minutes for both dates.
Bailey?
Approve.
Bailey?
Approve.
Approve.
Mr. Knox? Mr. Bailey?
Approve. Okay, the minutes have been accepted, is there any other business, Mr. Corey?
No, there's not, Mr. Chairman. With that being said, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.